President of the United States of America, thank you to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under our own individual liberty and justice for all.
You want to do it in here?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, wasn't probably impressed, but was it?
We've been having a few issues with technology this morning, but we think everything is working for the moment.
Commissioner Borgerson? Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
I don't see him yet.
Okay, we'll count Commissioner Kraft as absent for the moment. Uh, Comis- Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers? Mr. Chair? One, one moment, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, I had. Uh, Commissioner Borgerson, how do you vote? All right, and Commissioner Kavanaugh? Well, I, you're supposed to, I guess, I don't know if you did. It's, it's, all right. I was gonna ask you next. So, do you want to vote yes on the minutes and say, all right. Motion passes six to zero.
I'm not aware of any need for executive session here. Most. Um, who is the second? Commissioners Boyle and Morgan move in second to approve the rest of the BOE agenda and adjourn. Questions or comments? Then could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners, could we have roll call again, please?
Commissioner Borgerson? Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Uh, Commissioner Kraft, have you joined us yet?
No.
He's still absent. Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I know Commissioner Kraft was planning on calling in, so we're having a little bit of an issue there, I would think. Minutes and claims? Thank, thank you for the reminder to please silence all cell phones. I leave mine in my office. Item one is approval of minutes from last week's meeting, and B is claims submitted for payment through June 23rd. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Rogers to approve one A and B. Any questions or comments? Then could we please vote? All right, Commissioner Morgan is abstaining because there is a check written to him. Right.
Motion passes, five commissioners voting yes, and Commissioner Morgan abstaining.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda, where we find items A through O. Commissioner Boyle? Okay. Is there a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Kavanaugh to prove, approve the consent agenda less item A. Oh, okay, you were not seconding the motion, then?
I am seconding.
Okay, all right. The floor is yours. On, within consent?
Yes.
Okay, this is, go ahead. A, A is not part of the motion, correct. No, it's removed from this motion. We will come back to re, it's just not part of consent. He has to have it pulled from the consent agenda. Well, this is the appropriate time.
Okay. So, on item F, attestation and acceptance of terms and conditions of the dispersment of the Public Health and Social Service Emergency Fund. Is there someone from, I guess Douglas County Health Center here that could speak to that? Is there anyone who can speak to this? From our staff?
Teresa here at County Attorney's Office. Uh, this relates to funds that the Douglas County Health Center received under their Provider Relief Fund. It's part of the CARES Act. They accepted those funds and simply wanted to make the Board aware of that fact.
Right, and I want to make the public aware of this, so do we have a dollar amount and the purpose of these funds? And, you know, how they came through the CARES Act to the Douglas County Health Center?
I do not have a specific dollar figure on those funds, um, but perhaps 1.2 million, according to Jill Lorenz.
And perhaps Mr. Lorenz can address these, because they're kind of financial questions.
I'll, I'll try and do my best. DeeDee's been on the point for most of this.
That's all I can ask, Joe, that's all anybody can ever ask.
Okay.
So, you say it's 1.2 million from our, is this from our 166 million?
No, this is completely separate. This was money that was just wired directly from the government into the, um, Health Center's account, and it was based on some percentage of Medicare/Medicaid receipts. And it wasn't something that requested or had to file any paperwork. It was just money that was sent to them and with certain conditions. And I think what DeeDee's trying to do here is saying we've received the money, and as part of receiving the money, uh, we have to sign to, uh, to the conditions of the, uh, that they came with. And then, that, that money is staying in the Health Center and the Community Health Center funds and will be used at those facilities.
Okay. So, I see elsewhere on the agenda, we address, what you're kind of alluding to is what's called disproportionate share, which is the healthcare facility receives disproportionate share of its income from Medicaid/Medicare. They are compensated by the federal government. Is this a result of, of something related to the fact that the Health Center receives a disproportionate share of Medicare/Medicaid funding?
I think the formula is based on Medicare/Medicaid funding, but again, this is, was a special act of Congress meant to fund, uh, long-term care facilities and hospitals related to the pandemic.
Okay. And are there specific items that this 1.2 million dollars going to our Douglas County Health Center are going to fund going forward that you could tell us about?
Yeah, see, that's what I'm not an expert on, is how DeeDee and Erin and Sherry are, they know they have the money, they understand the conditions, and they're gonna be compliant with the conditions. And like I said, the money will be sent, spent at those facilities, but I, at this point, I'm not sure, at least I have not seen exactly what they anticipate spending the funds against.
Yeah, we had a trustees meeting yesterday, and I don't remember that this was discussed at all, and we're still waiting, actually, for them to send us the presentation that they put up on the screen, but we're unable to provide for us, they said that they would. So, that's as far as you know relative to this 1.2 million.
Yes.
And is it CARES Act funding?
It's CARES Act funding, I believe, but it's not part of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So, it is, it comes from a different, it's a different fund than the 166 million, which is the government, local gu, and state government Coronavirus Relief Fund. This is a separate part of the CARES Act dedicated to hospitals and long-term care facilities. So, while it's part of the CARES Act, it is separate than the 166 million that we are gonna discuss later.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's unfortunate that no one from the Health Center is here to explain this, but that's as much as you can tell us.
Yes, that's as much as I know.
All right. And this has already been received by Douglas County?
Yes. It was one of these where we got a phone call and said, uh, there's a million dollars in your account, and then we had a, you know, make some phone calls and figure out why it was there, so.
Right, right. And you can't speak to whether or not we can use part of it for retrofitting our facility for future COVID.
I, I have not seen the conditions of this, uh, so, so I can't really give you a, an answer on that.
Thank you.
Does that complete your questions, Commissioner?
No, it does not. There is, um, a follow-up question, but I don't see anybody from the Health Center. It's under Diane Carlson's, uh, name regarding the next item, actually. Resolution approving a one-year extension of disproportionate share of hospital intergovernmental transfer agreement with Department of Health and Human Services, which is connected to, oh, I do see Ms. Carlson. Thank you.
If I could interject, folks, on Zoom, there's a couple of you that I cannot mute on our own, so please make sure you're muted. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen, um, you heard the, uh, previous discussion relative to this funding that we've received. I don't know if you're at all familiar with that little chunk of money, not a little chunk, 1.2 million dollars, are you?
No, but I can address the item that deals with disproportionate share.
Okay, so disproportionate share, or dispro-share, as it's known, is basically rewarded to facilities that do a disproportionate share of Medicare/Medicaid, uh, revenues, right?
Right, it's, it's a federal program.
Right.
But this particular item, um, item G, that's actually dealing with the General Assistance Primary Healthcare Clinic.
Ah.
And not the Health Center. Is that right?
I think we're gonna hear from those folks, and, um...
Do you want me just to summarize what this item's about?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, sure. So, it, it relates to the federal program, matching program, whereby, uh, the federal government provides matching funds to states that have provided funding to facilities that provide medical care to low-income uninsured, uh, patients. And so, what this agreement basically does is it allows the state of Nebraska to use, the funds that General Assistance has, um, provided to the medical facilities, to use those funds as part of their matching. So, it's just an agreement that allows, um, the state to, to have, uh, General Assistance transfer those funds to the state, and then the state gets the federal match for those funds.
I get it. And is there a, a dollar certain on this, or is it just an authorization for an ongoing program?
Yeah, I think, I don't think there's a dollar certain, I think it's an ongoing program. We, we enter into this agreement every year. So, no, I don't have exact number for you.
Sure. And, and we spoke yesterday with the General Assistance folks at the trustees relative to this program. We didn't get into this component of it, but maybe we'll follow up with them, just in terms of what did we do last fiscal year in this program to give us, you don't know that number, do you?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. I have a, if, if my time's out, I'll do it on my second time, but I have a series of questions for Dr. Poor.
Well, yeah, your time is up, but you're the only one with questions. Please continue.
Good morning, Board members. Adipura, Douglas County Health Department.
Morning, Doctor. You have, um, I think, six, um, proposals here on the agenda, and, um, I, I know that we do this on an annual basis, and you're good to come and, uh, explain it to us every year. Are any of these new initiatives? Are they renewals of existing programs that we're involved with?
Well, number one is a grant, Vessna Virus Surveillance, that, that's every year, that's a very small amount, much smaller than what we are expanding on the program. Number two is a grant program that's been going on. Number three is new, uh, that is in regards to COVID testing in South Omaha and the University of Nebraska Medical Center. Number four is new too, that is for interpretive services there. And, uh, number four is a grant, that's a renewable grant. And number six is new too, because that is the security around the South Omaha COVID side.
Okay. So, the ones that you mentioned are new, three, four, and six, I believe, um, are those all receiving CARES funding?
Correct. Those will be, those will be under the CARES Fund, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just have one last question on item M, resolution accepting the 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carrie Davis, Douglas County Grant Coordinator.
So, um, this, uh, grant, um, what is the amount of this grant?
It's $56,304.
And what's the source of the funding?
It's from, it's a federal grant. It is part of the CARES Act, but it's separate from the other money that you guys will be discussing later today. This was an allocation based on our population.
Okay. And what's it for?
The, uh, the Department of Corrections is going to use it for, um, additional cleaning supplies and disinfecting supplies that they would not have purchased outside of the COVID-19 pandemic.
And was it specifically for Corrections use?
No, mm-mm. We could have used it for anything. It didn't even have to be criminal justice use.
And why is it separate from the mainline CARES funding?
That's just the way that the feds streamlined everything. They broke everything out. Some of the CARES funds went to HHS, some of them went to DOJ, and this is to the Department of Justice. So, th, these are DOJ funds.
Okay. And why is it 56,000?
It's based on, it's based on the allocation from our Burn Grant, our Justice Assistance Grant, which is the JAG Grant. Um, they take our population, just Omaha minus the city, um, and then they divide the money based on our population, so.
And you say it's for cleaning supplies and what else?
Disinfecting, additional disinfecting supplies that Corrections wouldn't have purchased otherwise.
Are any PPEs, uh, contained in this?
I think there's some masks, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions to the consent agenda?
That's it.
Then let us vote on the consent agenda less item A.
I vote yes.
Oh, Commissioner Kraft has rejoined us.
Motion passes, uh, one voting virtually, all others voting in person.
Thank you. This brings us back to item A. Is there a motion?
Yes.
I will, and a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Borgerson, question and Commissioner Boyle?
Uh, yes, I, initially, I thought this was immigration, it was ICE, but it's not, it's the Marshal Service. Young people in the youth, Douglas County Youth Center who are there on a, because they are, uh, charged with, uh, federal violation and being held there by the US Marshal Service. And so, that's a different thing, it's not immigration, but I'm still concerned because it says that the last whereas, which, uh, is, the last whereas says that the federal government shall have access to the facility and to the federal detainees housed there and to all records and so forth. These are minors, uh, charged with adult crimes, and, uh, it's very important that they have access to legal counsel anytime they're questioned by, uh, the, uh, government that's, uh, charging them with a crime. Uh, I, I, I don't like the wording on this, but I, I know they do have to have access, but I think they have, we have to guarantee that the young people, uh, you know, have an attorney present. And so, I, I think we ought to be, uh, if the public defender is not notified, um, then their, if a person is in there and has their own lawyer, they need to be notified before anyone from the US Marshal speaks to these minors. So, I'm not sure if we can amend this or how that works, but, uh, uh, they can't just go in and talk to them. So, uh, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know how urgent all this is, but, uh, I think we ought to be asking some questions before we agree to this. I'd like to see this say that, um, you know, the public defender is notified, uh, when the federal government, uh, requests access to the facility to speak to these detainees. So, I mean, I'd make that amendment that would say that, instead of it saying whereas at all times, the federal government shall have access to the facilities and to the federal detainees housed there, uh, on the condition the, that the public, Douglas County public defender is notified well in advance and to all records pertaining whatever, whatever better language there is. Okay? I'd make that in some form of a motion, that motion that someone with a little more eloquent writing skills could, could put that in there, so it fits with commas and periods and all that, but, uh, definitely the county public defender, Mr. Riley, should be notified. So, I'd make that a motion and ask someone who drew this up to do some wordsmith on it and, uh, add that clause.
Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a contract that, um, we've had for, geez, many, 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 many years. It's a four-year contract with a $255 day per diem, and basically, the feds need access because they take care of all the transports to federal court, and then they also pay for all the prescription, um, drugs and hospital visits, um, that these, um, young people may need. Just for way of history, um, in 2018, we had two youth, and in 2019, we had two youth, and we currently have no youth, um, that would pertain to this, um, uh, this contract or this resolution. But again, this isn't anything new that we haven't done for many, many years. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Along the lines that Commissioner Boyle was, uh, talking about whether or not we've done this for a long time, there's no justification to keep doing it, but I have reached out to the, uh, Immigrant Legal Center, uh, to review this document. They were unaware of it and represent probably more, um, federal detained youth than anybody else in town. And it might be prudent, uh, along the lines that, uh, Commissioner Boyle indicated to lay this over until we've had, uh, legal review by some people that are more skeptical than maybe some of my colleagues, of what the federal government wants to do, locking up kids in our facility, um, and then make some of the, um, changes that Commissioner Boyle indicated might be, uh, prudent to make, um, and do this at our next available meeting. There seems to be no rush to do this, but, um, it's probably important to do it right rather than do it quick. So, I would, I, and Commissioner Boyle, you have a motion to, to do something?
To amend that never got a second.
Would you, would you be amendable to laying it over for a week so that we could do some of these?
You know, I would, I'm very sorry about that, but I think, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Kavanaugh, and I understand, uh, Commissioner Borgerson's very well-versed in all this, and I appreciate her giving us the population. It does, it does, is a very small number, but I just want to be sure, if, if they're doing transportation and medical, that's one thing, but I, I don't like the idea that they say that they can access to the facility and the federal detainees housed there. It sounds like they can come in and talk to them anytime. And if they're doing transportation, that's one thing, but if they're talking to them and asking them questions and they don't have legal counsel, I don't like that. Patrick has told me that the Director of the Department is on the line, uh, he's not on, on, uh, whatever that is. He's, uh, I'll get my hammer and fix it. But, uh, Patrick says, uh, Brad Alexander's on the line if we want any comment from him. I'm curious what they do when they go in, maybe Brad can tell us.
Brad, are you with us? Mr. Alexander?
I don't think he's on Zoom.
He told me he's on the line. Um, what he did tell me is that they do not hold for ICE and that they do contact the attorney of record if they have questions about a youth. But I just asked him, are you on? And he said he is, so I don't know.
Yes, I'm on.
Yeah, Brad just, Brad just talked, so he's on.
Who's, who, was that Brad or Mark?
Both of us.
All right, so Brad, if Brad's on, maybe he can start talking and provide some clarification.
Uh, yes, good morning, Commissioner, this is Brad Alexander with the Douglas County Youth Center. Just, I guess to the first point, um, if you, if you'd like to lay it over and see if we can do some, uh, put some different language in there, there is no urgency, that is fine. Um, but when they come up to, uh, to talk to the youth, um, which is, is pretty rare, it's generally just a transport situation, but when they do come up to talk to the youth, we do contact the, uh, the attorney on record. And, and as far as the ICE kids, we haven't, we haven't held a, a kid for immigration for, I honestly couldn't tell you the last time that has happened. I think it's even goes back further than the, when we stopped holding status offenders, it's been that long ago.
Okay, well, I, I would like to, uh, hold it over for some kind of language saying that the contact, the, that, uh, the attorney of record is contacted someplace in that language. I, I really would like to see that in there, so there's no misunderstanding if they start chatting with the defendant about the case. I, I don't think they'd ever do that, but I don't want that to happen. It's, it's way too important, so I would like to lay it over. I hope everyone will give us a chance to, uh, get this back to Brad and have him get some, another.
Hi, I'm Deara Godinez with the Immigrant Legal Center.
Uh, one, one moment, please. Commissioner Kraft avoiding, uh, an opportunity.
I was going to invite Deara to speak.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. I'm the Director of Legal Services at the Immigrant Legal Center. Um, if you're unfamiliar with ILC, we're a nonprofit law firm in Omaha made up of attorneys and legal service providers. And, um, I am present regarding consent agenda item A, particularly as it relates to housing immigration detainees at the Douglas County Youth Center. Um, I believe I heard, um, Brad explained that, um, that they haven't held kids for, immigration holds for quite some time. As, um, you're considering amending the agreement as it relates to access to counsel, I'd love to be part of the conversation that may, uh, likewise amend the agreement as it relates to immigration and customs enforcement. I see on box 18 on page four of, um, the attachment to the agenda that allows for on page four of the attachment to the agenda that allows for federal juvenile detainees, but does not allow for Bureau of Prisons or Immigration and Customs Enforcement to operate under the agreement. However, the second clause of the board's resolution indicates that the definition of federal detainees includes individuals who are awaiting a hearing on their immigration status or deportation.
Right.
If this does include individuals solely being held in ICE custody, it possibly could mean detaining children for civil violations, as immigration court is a civil court, not a criminal court. There are some pretty alarming statistics related to access to counsel for children and for individuals who are detained in ICE custody that I would be happy to share. But it sounds like this might get moved forward anyway. I'm in favor of that and would welcome an opportunity to participate in discussions regarding amendments.
Thank you.
Well, I for one would like to see them involved. I think that because that does involve immigration, I think it's just a good thing. So if Brad would do.
And I agree with that.
Okay.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, your mic's not on.
Thank you. I would second Commissioner Boyle's motion to lay this over for amendment. I'm glad that the Immigration Legal Center is on this call. They do great work, and I've been on their board as a precursor to their current iteration for some time. I admire what they do. And I would welcome their participation in reviewing this language so that we don't leave any loopholes to let the Douglas County Youth Center being a holding pen for immigrant children.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, did you say you are on their board?
I am not.
Okay.
I have been associated with a precursor of this organization.
All right. Thank you. Well, I personally think we're trying to fix something that isn't broken. We'd love to take one little snippet of information and rush to judgment on it. I'm not. We don't have a problem here. Brad Alexander just said kids are talking to their attorneys when when appropriate. If mostly what they're doing is transporting a couple of kids a year, I can see problems with them wanting to transport. And we say, but you haven't talked to the public defender yet, and we said you had to. I'm really much more comfortable letting our legal counsel guide us rather than the legal counsel of a nonprofit. We have our attorneys, and that's who I choose to get my legal advice from.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Boyle. Well, it is significant. It's I understand. This is something that we apparently have just been renewing without reading it carefully, and I'll accept the blame for that. But it does mention individuals who are awaiting a hearing on their immigration status or deportation. And it also so that's it's a good idea to have someone in that has that kind of experience if Mr. Alexander would like it. The other thing is, though, it is a contract, and it says that it's just one of the terms that if they're going to talk to the young adult about their case that they should be represented in, even though that is taking place, as Mr. Alexander said, it's not in the contract. And so why don't we take out the part that says they shall have access to the facility and just have that understood? You know, so when we take take that out, and then they come to get in, and we say, no, you can't, but there's no contract on it. But so I mean, the point is it puts something in the contract that says if you're going to be and it has to be skillfully written, and we have skillful lawyers who would say that if you're going to be speaking to them about their their case, that they must be represented, and we must follow what we've been doing informally. And it's just putting in writing what we've been doing informally. So there's no big change. It's just putting it in writing, which is reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. So our office did work with the U.S. Marshals on this contract and did negotiate with them on it. And I have to kind of refocus the board here. This contract is not with ICE. It is with the U.S. Marshal Service.
We know that.
And so US my understanding from the U.S. Marshals is that they do not transport, hold, or detain individuals for immigration status. That would be ICE's purview. And so this is not with ICE. It's with U.S. Marshals. With regards to their attorneys, there is a process in place for that. Brad Alexander has confirmed that. In addition, it wouldn't be, I don't believe, the Douglas County Public Defender who would need to be incorporated into that agreement because these are federal charges. And so the kids are going through the the federal system as adults. And so I just wanted to make sure the board was clear on the parameters.
Yeah. Well, I brought up, if I could, I brought up legal counsel. I wasn't talking about the public defender until later. But and I realize that if it doesn't involve people who are immigration, being kept in immigration, then let's strike that last sentence in number two that says they transport individuals who are awaiting a hearing on their immigration status or deportation. It looks like the Marshals are just doing transportation. And maybe that's what I ought to say. This is not ICE. This is the Marshals. This contract limits the Marshals' involvement to transportation. You ought to say that because it isn't clear. When it says they shall have access to the young people who are held, that isn't clear what they're doing. So and I understand they're not bringing the charges. They're kind of a taxi service, so to speak. But I just want to make sure that, as Brad said, that if there's any any problem, their lawyers are called with that. Let's put it in writing.
So what I can say is that our office did negotiate this with the U.S. Marshals, and this is the language that they are willing to to deal with under this contract.
Well, then maybe we don't hold the prisoners then if they're not willing.
And that's certainly something the board could consider is whether or not to do the contract at all.
If I could suggest, maybe you contact them and tell them what the concern is that I believe that's what Brad Alexander said, that if there's any need to have a lawyer, that they are allowed a lawyer. So if they object to that, I don't know why they really would be. But it should be limited if it's just transportation, then let's make it clear that that's all they're doing. They don't need to have access to them anytime.
Well, I think it has been stated by others during this course of this meeting that it is more than just transportation. I believe Marianne Borgerson mentioned that there's medication provided.
Yeah.
So they are providing for more than just the transportation of these federal prisoners. They are federal prisoners being housed or detained at the Douglas County Youth Center pursuant to this contract.
Well, what may I ask? What services do they provide then? Let's limit the contract to transportation and medicine and whatever else they provide. Because you see what bothers them is it says they shall have access to the facility. That means they show up at the door and say, let us in. And we have a contract that says we have to. And then it says, and to the federal detainees housed there. So they have a right to go right up to the person, the young adult, the child. How old the child is, we don't know. But it's not not the age of majority. And, you know, they have access to them. If they if they don't need that, then let's take that out. That's all I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying.
So let's limit to what let's limit it to what they're doing. And maybe you if it's just transportation and medic medicine, let's limit it. And don't say they have access to them at the facility. They can come in and knock on the door, and we have to let them in.
They would need some access. They would need access to their prisoners that are being detained in our facility for.
Yeah. But they're not. Why would that be?
They transportation is one of the things that they've agreed to, and they would need to be able to.
Transportation that you don't need. They don't need access. I mean, they come to get them to take them somewhere. They're providing transportation. They obviously would provide them.
I understand what you're saying. And what I can tell you is we've negotiated this contract with the U.S. Marshals. This is what they are in agreement with. A contract is a meeting of the minds between two parties. If this board is not of the in agreement with and we have a meeting of the minds with the U.S. Marshal Service, you can you can ask us to go back again, and we'll try again, or the board can simply not want to enter into the contract with the U.S. Marshal Service.
Issue ultimatums. What the thing is that Teresa, what I'm saying is, did you bring up transportation and medication to them?
The answer is yes. It's in the contract with regards to those two items. And I can tell you that we also brought up striking the the phrase regarding the deportation and the immigration status.
And they wouldn't.
And they rejected that.
Well, I think we need to look at what we're doing. And I don't know that I don't know why they would need. They're just transporting those kids, those children, aren't they? Immigration.
Again, it is. Again, it's my understanding that the U.S. Marshals do not transport, hold, or detain individuals for immigration status. That's all I can tell you with regards to what this is not a contract with ICE. It's a contract with the U.S. Marshals. And I know you know that.
I know that.
Yeah.
Well, the second paragraph, just simply, it says that they're waiting trial. Individuals who have been sentenced and are awaiting designation and transport to a Bureau of Prisons facility and individuals who are waiting a hearing on their immigration status or deportation. So it means they can transport, and that's all it is. So why don't we just talk about transport and medication and get this other thing out of there about they can come up to the door, two o'clock in the morning, knock on the door and say, we want in. I don't I don't. That's what we have to avoid. So I don't think it's nuclear science. I think what we need to do is just have a contract that says what service we need and limit it to that. Why don't we have Brad and the immigration people kind of kick in an idea and see what it is? I'm not I'm not chastising the contract itself, but it does go further than it should. I think it's just a little bit more than it's more than I want because it talks about them being able to get into the building anytime they want.
The motion before us is to lay this over for one week.
I second that.
Well, I hope it passes. This this is not what it's made out to be. It's simply clarifying the who what the what the purpose of the Bureau of the Bureau, the Marshals is. And it should be transportation and medicine only. So I hope you'll vote yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Stick it out.
I would second that. And I'm not comfortable voting for anything that allows the federal government to hold kids in our youth center who are waiting hearings on immigration status or deportation. So that definitely has to come out. That's a camel's nose of making us a dumping ground for kids who are rounded up on immigration things, whether they are specifically held by ICE or the U.S. Marshal. This language is clear. And I appreciate what our county attorney's done in negotiating with them, but it needs to come out. And if we're only talking a couple of kids, and we're only talking at $225 per diem, this is a negligible amount of money to Douglas County to hold children for the federal government to dispose of them when immigration matters. So I second what the.
Although I will say, if people are planning on voting no, I'm not sure what we accomplished by by laying over. I mean, we have a negotiated agreement that's been in place for years. I'm not sure what we're hoping to accomplish. Commissioner Borgerson.
Speak on the item. But I guess what I would ask, Commissioner Boyle, this was already laid over.
Right.
And those issues were supposed to have been addressed, and they weren't.
I don't know. I don't know who on our staff didn't do it. But we asked that that last paragraph be taken out. And that's that happens once in a while where someone didn't do and understand their whoever had the responsibility to do that.
Well, I guess those asking for it to be laid over have a responsibility just to double check.
Well, why don't you give me a chance to do that?
And I will because I would just I mean, again, my comment about having this for a very long time. Again, Commissioner Kavanaugh tries to take words and twist them. My point was is that we had it for a long time. It's not anything new. To me, having a child held in our youth center rather and close to their home rather than some other center, I think is a good thing rather than a bad thing.
I agree.
But I would ask that you follow up and make sure that that's taken care of so we don't have to lay this over again.
The motion before oh, anybody else wish to speak to the motion to lay over? Go ahead. This is your opportunity.
Larry Store, 5015, Lafayette. Yeah, I'm much in favor of laying over. But quite frankly, I think you should scrap it and start all over again. I wonder how many people in this room understand what that's all about. How about some plain language so citizens can know what you're doing back there? And after two or three years of hullabaloo about the Justice Center and a new juvenile Justice Center, it sounds like you're moving hardened criminals down there with the just with the juveniles? It doesn't say anything about that. But that's what it looks like. It also sounds like, oh, is this a way to get around being a sanctuary city? It also sounds like, oh, if these are juvenile, all juveniles, how come they're not just detained for one day, interviewed, and released to parents or a community partner? That's what all this has been about for about three years now. Programs, keep them out of jail. Now we're asking them going to let marshals detain people that are possibly illegal? I think the world herald needs to explain this to us because you people don't. I just who in this room, if you understand it, can raise their hand and say, we understand it? You've been here a long time, Mike. You could understand those things better.
Well, I think everybody.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak? Thank you. May I speak for a minute?
Commissioner Boyle.
I appreciate the opportunity just to answer some of the comments that you made. We're normally not allowed to do that. But this was you spoke in context to this item. There are children who are in that facility who are there accused of first degree murder, second degree murder, burglary, felony committing a felony with a firearm. They're serious offenses, and they are at that facility. And I don't know what these children are being held for. These young adults, younger than the age of majority, are being held for. But they are being held by the U.S. Marshals to be they've done something against they've broken a federal law. So in any event, that's what this is all about. There are a lot of children there who are in deep trouble. We just had a shooting the other day of a 15-year-old who shot somebody who was 13 and killed him. That child is in the facility now. So I mean, they are some of the kids are they're serious offenses. And I think what has been tried to do is to get get these things worked out so we can treat the children who need treatment and can and will benefit from it. All this is is and it's been overlooked, and I apologize for not following up and taking out that last whereas. But it's just that we need to focus on what service the marshals are providing. And if it's medicine and transportation, it ought to say so. And it shouldn't say they have access to the facility and that they have access to the children. That's that's not necessary in the sense of I know in medicine it certainly is. But that's understood. If they're bringing medicine, they obviously would have to somehow give it out. But in any event, I would ask that it be laid over. And I apologize for that. I should have followed it closely. I assumed, and you know what that means? I assumed it would be taken care of, and it wasn't. So I apologize to the board and to the taxpayers for this mistake that I made.
The motion before us is to lay over the item for one one week, I believe the motion was.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If there are no more further questions or comments, could we please vote?
I vote yes.
Motion passes. Five voting yes in person, one voting yes virtually, one commissioner voting no.
Thank you. I'll do my best to present something that makes some sense. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to rearrange our agenda for one item here that I think is going to be a quick item that we should be able to get out of the way quickly, and that is item 6A, a public hearing and resolution providing public approval for issuance by hospital authority number two of Douglas County of revenue bonds for the benefit of Nebraska Medical Center. And Joel Vanderveen is present today. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to speak to this issue? Item 6A. I know I saw Joel. Yeah, when he is you don't really have to come down. I get I thought that was you behind the mask. Everybody kind of looks alike. So Mr. Vanderveen is present. If anybody has any questions for him. We're having a public hearing right now on item 6A. This is the public hearing. Because I asked us to. Okay, I will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to approve. Mr. Esch, if there are no questions or comments, could we please take the vote?
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we will return to the usual order for the agenda. I thank you for letting me get that item out of the way. Next on the agenda is the recognition of a retiring county employee, Brian Bond, retiring from the Douglas County Youth Center after 25 years. Is Mr. Bond present? I have a motion on a second to approve the recognition. If there are no questions or comments, could we please vote?
Hey, who was the second on that? Okay, Commissioner Borgerson. All right, thank you.
I vote yes.
Congratulations on getting out of here.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Would anybody like to address this board on any item that is not on the agenda? If so, this is your opportunity to do so. If so, this is your opportunity to do so. Okay. We will move next to the presentations. The first is discussion slash action regarding proposed CARES Act funding allocations for eligible COVID-19 expenses. And we have four items listed on the agenda for consideration. The first is, well, they're from the Health Department, the Treasurer's Office, Public Properties, and General Assistance. And we will start with the Health Department. Good morning, Dr. Porter.
Good morning, board members. I'm Dr. Porter, Douglas County Health Department. So what I prepared for you today is really kind of our vision, what it would take for this community to be prepared. And my overall vision with the projects that I am representing to you today is that we are really looking at this through an equity lens and very specific to the Board of Health Resolution that we brought forward last week. And so this is supposed to address the individuals that are most affected by coronavirus in our community and those that are most vulnerable. So I want you to, this is also my commitment to the community that we made with that board resolution. I get a lot of questions, well, what are the actions? What are you going to do? This is what we are doing from now on, using really an equity lens, specifically when it is around funding and programming what our community needs. And when you see this, I just put these two facts, and this I did over the weekend. We had 6,240 cases, and 77% of those cases are in our minority community. So can you understand why it is really important that we address those needs? Eighty of our deaths, and today we are reporting two new deaths, unfortunately. Seventy-one percent of those are in our population, 65 years and older. So this is kind of the big buckets, I would call. There are potentially six of them. And this is a high-power presentation. I'm not going to go into nitty-gritty's. We have put proposals together that about three weeks ago, that now potentially have some tweaks in them, but I'm more than happy to share those with you. But I think for today, for this discussion, I want to keep it kind of broad. And so these are the six categories that we have, and I will go into each of them. So the first one is a very typical internal one that we needed to do. When this happened, it started in March, March 6. We actually needed to retrain internal staff because suddenly we didn't have environmental health inspectors who were going out to restaurants. So we retrained a lot of people internally. Actually, I can tell you, potentially...
That's all right.
Do you want me to...
I was just talking to Dan. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Okay, okay. Potentially, I would think 80% of our staff has been working on COVID-19. These are staff who have been funded by grant programs. Of course, those grant programs didn't go forward, so we transferred them over to COVID-19. We have timesheets. We have pretty quickly determined an account for all the work that is going on under COVID-19. And those individuals, every week when they fill out their timesheet, they actually go to those timesheets. So we know now, we have some experience from March on. We have potentially an expenditure just internally for our staff of 200,000. We also hired some of our retired staff back immediately because that was one of the needs that we had. Also, we realized pretty quickly, we needed to get the words out and hire more part-timers. So we are looking now consistently at CVs and so on. And we have hired more than 20 part-time employees. And those will be for 40 hours per week until the end of this year. These are individuals, let me just share with you quickly. We have now, our information line has now received more than 10,000 calls. They received potentially, yesterday I think they received 178 calls. These are calls that are not, am I red or am I black? And these are calls that are about, what do I need to do? Where are my test results? What does quarantine mean? What does isolation mean? What do I need to do with the direct health measures? Those calls can sometimes go more than half an hour. So these are really, and there is ongoing training because what we need to do is we need to be consistent with our messages that we are giving. We have what we call frequent flyers, people who call all the time, the information line. And they call and make sure that we are giving the same message. So I want to tell you, this is a huge endeavor. I'm glad we did this for the community starting in March. We were thinking of giving it off to somebody like a 3-1-1 until we realized, no, these need to be trained professionals. So that is one of the things. The other thing is PPE. We have given out more than 1.6 million pieces of PPE. And PPE is protective measure, equipment, which would be masks, goggles...
Excuse me, Dr. Porter. Folks on the Zoom call, this is Clerk Comptroller Esch. Please mute yourself.
Gowns, gloves, those type of things. So all that PPE is ordered by the state because the state felt it was better to actually purchase it in bulk. And then we have forums where people can fill out the orders, organizations can fill out the orders. The orders go to the state. Then all the PPE comes back to us, to the warehouse, close to where we are on 40th and 42nd. And from that, it is being broken down and then distributed out to all those organizations. So we have become a distributor, so to say, not typically a public health function, but also has to do a lot of education. We are not be able to give PPE to everyone. In the beginning, it used to be very much restricted to those who have, take care of patients with COVID-19. So I just want to share with you that the extent of the operations that the Health Department is doing has really stretched out a lot. So we are foreseeing for this, the cost to be around 2.7 million. I also want to share with you, these are not numbers that we know for sure at this time. This is kind of what we are saying, it looks like at this time. We will only be able to charge whatever the expenditures are in our department, so I want to make that sure. This is probably a component for our community that I have heard now over and over, meaning we are not doing enough outreach to our minority community. We are not including the minority community and the vulnerable population. I just got an email from a church in North Omaha with a list, one page long, of things that they need. And some of it is, they need brochures, they need somebody to come there, give them information, and so on. So what we are foreseeing, what would really work well, is to put together a community advisory. The community advisory has potential, we have identified already more than 20 organizations from the community, but also community members. Because it is not only organizations, it is the community members who know the best what is needed. And so some of this would pay for daycare, it would actually pay for transportation for those individuals because we hear this over and over, you are having these meetings, you are bringing organizations together. We cannot come and attend. So this is really our goal, to really increase that. Working with workforce, developing a toolkit, well-being partner is on the table around that. And then the Omaha churches, we know that churches are really important. Media production, I have heard from media outlets in North Omaha and in South Omaha, both of them saying, we would like to put campaigns together, media campaigns, but we need money to do it. We cannot do it otherwise. So this would actually also take care of that. Then access to resources, we have a lot of face coverings at this time, but I don't think we can have enough. So we are talking about what really is the communication around resources, antibody treatment, communication around those areas. Then we are starting to think about fall, or next spring, actually. What is it about vaccine that now we need to develop information around it? And also start communicating with our healthcare provider, and you will see a bigger item, mass vaccination. Mental health, we are not doing enough to address mental health in this crisis. This is, affects everyone in our community. And I can tell you, there are lots of people who have real struggle. So this would really be getting into some psychological first aid, train the trainer, anti-stigma campaign, be part of that as it relates to COVID-19, not as it relates to general mental health. Social determinants of health, we have at this time about five community health worker, which is not enough by all means. But what they are doing is, when people need to be isolated because they are positive for COVID-19, those individuals will ask, can you isolate at home? What do you need to be isolating at home or quarantining for 14 days? And some people say, well, you know, we can't get any food. So we have an agreement with no more empty parts and the food bank actually to provide boxes, food boxes to those individuals, to bring them to the doorstep. So those individuals do not have to leave the home. I just want to make one comment. When I looked at data again this morning, we cannot overemphasize how important it is. If you are a contact of a positive case, you need to stay home, you need to quarantine yourself. 50% of our new cases have had contact with a positive. So you can make a difference. You know, we all need to work together. I know that's difficult, but it is these measures that are making sure that people will follow it. Then we have a halftime data analyst in there and a COVID survey that we would like to do with PRC, a local company here, to really try to see how the COVID-19 impact individuals, what could have been done better. And then we have, in the proposal, a contract with Creighton University. They actually already have more than 25 navigators in the community. And what we want to do is, we would like to train them to really, in regards to COVID, be out there in the community. This is a big proposal for the community. Testing, what we have seen is, we have Test Nebraska. Test Nebraska is you do an assessment on internet, and then you get called in for a test, a drive-through. And it's very effective for those who have emails and for those who feel comfortable in giving all that information. What we are hearing from the community over and over, we are not able to do the assessment. We don't have email to receive the results. That's okay. You're trying to take that out. So that's what we have found is, we need to go there where the community is. So we have the South Omaha site. You have just approved a contract with Nebraska Medicine to do for six weeks, to do at 50th and G, drive-through testing. And we have started last week, and we are going, it's going on right now. It's for four hours every afternoon. People do not have to sign up. They can sign up. But otherwise, they can just come to the site, and they are being tested. That's the proposal from them, 295,000. And we would like to set aside the same amount for North Omaha. We have not decided on a site or on a way yet, and it may look a little bit different. Then we heard very quickly on the first day, we didn't have security at the site, but we realized that you had a contract on there today. It's around 31,000, I think, is the contract. So that is for security, for the traffic flow on that site. Interpreters for each site, they are so important because there are a lot of people who come to the site who do not speak English, or it's not their first language. So that's what the testing needs to be. Capital expenditure is probably our smallest amount that we have in this proposal, so I'm not asking for a new building, just really some outbuilding that we are needing. One is, we need additional space and workstation in our call center. Our call center at this time and will remain is in a conference room that we have actually used at our office by all three, four departments, so to say. We have used that, the conference room, and we have put phone lines in there. But we need more workstations. They are sitting too close together. And when they are on the phone, the other one can hear what the other is saying. So to build out those workstations, we are putting in 146,000. To upgrade the communication system, that has become a huge issue for us because the phone system is not flexible enough so that we actually can work with this. So this would be a new phone system that we need to put in. And then epidemiology, because they do have four, potentially four new staff members, they need additional space. We have not run this through our building division, so this is really all, just really in draft, as you see it. Then non-congregate shelters, that may seem, and I have heard that there may be, this is not an item that we should, the Health Department should put in there, but I'm sharing with you what that actually means. Non-congregate shelter for medically fragile individuals that are in homeless shelters. That is what we had to do and set up very quickly in the beginning, actually kind of at the end of March. When the shelters had positive cases, they tried to do the best of separating individuals. But they called on a Friday, of course, at 6 o'clock and said, you know, we have fragile individuals in our shelter. They cannot stay here now that we are knowing we have positives in our shelter. So we made contact with hotels close by the shelters, and we actually purchased rooms in these hotels because they were close to the shelters, the shelter people could go over there, check with them, and provide all the other services. So that is what we are proposing up here for the medically fragile. Then those who have to quarantine, we are finding that out too, the hard way is, not everybody can quarantine in a shelter, but the hospitals already are, not the hospitals, the hotels are saying, you know, I don't know if we can provide you rooms. So this proposal actually looks at an entire wing of a hotel that would be set aside for quarantined individual. Therefore, you see laundry, you see commercial cleaning that goes along. This is best practice, what has been done in communities nationwide. And I think we, in our community, we also have really, we should commit to also take care of the most vulnerable one. Mass vaccination program, you may say, and why mass vaccination now? Who is talking about mass vaccination? You know what? It's coming quicker than we think about it. Yes, we cannot be for sure that we have vaccine coming this fall, but there are things that we need to do now. So planning is going on now at the Health Department and also at the state in regards to mass vaccination. Mass vaccination is huge for this community. And I tell you, for the whole department, it would mean all hands on deck. We wouldn't do nothing else for about six weeks until we have vaccinated all the individuals that would want to be vaccinated. But it does take quite a bit of equipment. It takes refrigerators. Because you have a vaccine that is not going to be stable, you have to have correct temperatures. So it takes PPE, it takes iPads to do that or to go to the site. So equipment, they've actually, that number is a pretty good number. They've actually really tried to determine what they need. They've tried to determine medical supplies. It seems to be a pretty good number, too. Communication, of course, needs to go along with that. And I put in here half by the end of 2020 because if we do not have a vaccine by 2020 to administer, these things, equipment and medical supply, we could have in place, purchase it with the CARES funding that we have now, but save some for when the vaccine comes. And the same thing with staffing. Staffing is probably the biggest component in mass vaccination. It's $4.6 million because we would actually need to contract with individuals like the VNA to have nurses on staff who actually can do this. This means vaccinating a half a million people in Douglas County. A lot of vaccines will come to healthcare providers, but you know what? Not everybody will be able to go to their healthcare provider to actually get vaccinated. We are also foreseeing that we actually would have some vans... We are also foreseeing that we actually would have some vans who will go around in communities. So we will bring vaccines to the community instead of asking the community who has no transportation to come to one site. So this is really a good overall program. No vaccine available, the cost for this would be about 1.2 million. If we do have vaccine available and we need the staff for it, of course, the cost would be much higher. So that's kind of what I want to share with you and some of these things are moving forward because, you know, time is of the essence. We are soon in the end, end of June, and this is when the communication needs to be out. This is when we are hearing back and people are saying, why is there not more testing? Why are people not going to get tested? Don't we have the right education out there? And so I'm, I'm putting this forward to you and glad to answer some questions you may have.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yes.
This is great. This is exactly the kind of document that we need on each and every one of these cares appropriations that we're going to be considering. And I want to commend you for putting it together. I, I just noticed because I, like you, first thing in the morning, checked the numbers and this has a 6240 cases in Douglas County number. New York Times today has it at 6,489 and we're still going up. Is that right?
Correct. We are going up actually. The last two days were pretty good days because we went up around 64 each day. And to me that is good, but now we are up again to 100 today. I just got the results when I was sitting here. So we are a little bit stuck around the 100 number. I, 100 people every day who get infected with COVID and are positive.
Man, I appreciate that. And all of the numbers that you're talking here, dollars numbers are coming directly out of the 166 million COVID.
That's what, that's what I would assume.
That's what you're proposing? Okay.
Yep.
And this total of all of the things that you talked about is 13.4 million dollars. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. So the 20 new employees that you've added, are those, you know, when they're picked up under this, are those going to become employees of Douglas County long term? Are they intended to be just temporary employees?
Unfortunately, they are going to be temporary employees. There are one or two, potentially four staff that I would like to come back to the county board to actually see if they could be permanent employees.
Okay. Thank you. The housing proportion that you have in here on page six, I've numbered these myself because there wasn't a number on them, but there's, there's housing in here and we're going to be talking about that. You're talking about housing people who are basically homeless. Is that correct?
In the non-congregate shelter, yes, that's what we are talking about.
And you know that general assistance is engaged in some of the same activity. Are you planning on coordinating with the general assistance initiatives relative to housing?
I don't, I didn't know. I didn't think that general assistance is in non-congregate shelters. They are more in housing.
Of people and we're going to be talking housing of people, but the housing that you're talking about is for when you define them as, as vulnerable, is that an exclusive group?
That's a very exclusive group, only homeless people. Now the community health workers, when we talk about housing, we make referrals, you know, and there is MATCH, Together Inc., those are housing organizations who have, who have those resources available.
And on the testing things you indicated, we've approved some of these already on the agenda today, but I noticed that some of the numbers aren't quite total. So you'll be back to us for additional funding on, on that relative to some of the interpreter costs and some of the security costs. Is that right?
That's right. You had, you had one security contract on the agenda. I think you also had one interpreter on, on the agenda today.
And as far as the new activities on site, you're just building out on your existing footprint on county property, right?
Absolutely. We are now building on, we are building, just building more cubicles.
So we're going to be talking relative to this housing question later in this presentation, but on Thursday as well in the Health and Human Services Committee. And it'd be good to have coordination on everything that we do for anybody in need of housing rental assistance, any shelter COVID impacted people. I mean, it's all the same. So I appreciate you bringing this up for this population. But on the vaccine portion of this, have we anticipated using like existing vaccine dispensaries like Walgreens, CVS, where people go and get their flu shots, they go and get their, their shingle shots already?
Absolutely. Pharmacies will play a very important role, but again, there are going to be, public health is always filling the gaps and where are the gaps? So there are going to be healthcare providers, pharmacies that are going to receive vaccine. So we are the gap filler, so to say.
Okay. So are you asking today for us to approve 13.4 million dollars in cares funding to the Douglas County Health Department?
That would be my, my first ask, yes.
And you anticipate additional expenses?
I don't, you know, yeah, I probably shouldn't ever say never, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Publicly thank you for the unbelievably competent job you're doing. You're really the, I shouldn't say it this way, but you're the face of the, of the virus. You're not the face of the virus. You're really the, the person who's really leading the, leading all of us in what, what to do and how to behave. So I really appreciate your guidance. I, I do, this is an excellent presentation, could not have been better. It just, some of it is very disheartening, the page on the number of minorities that are, the cases 77% is shocking. But then you think about the essential workers who work at grocery stores and deliver the mail and drive the buses and have the jobs that are really very essential and that exposes them to so many people. I suppose that's what makes sense. And sometimes the multi-generational housing that takes place too with someone maybe working in a packing house and coming home to an 83 year old mother and a three year old child and all that sort of thing. It just, so it's very difficult and I, I just really appreciate the, knowing that and having it be public. It's really important. This budget seems very realistic to me and I, I totally support it. I think it's, makes a great deal, deal of sense. One of the things I was curious about is, you know, Omaha has a lot of call centers, hotel reservations and so forth. And I don't know whether they're all functioning at full speed or not. And I'm not, I'm not nixing what you want to do, but there may be some opportunity for the health department to be able to use a call center that has all the equipment and all that rest of it. But it would not be someplace where it would be adjacent to your facility. That's the only difficulty. But it may be something that might make some sense that could be up and running immediately. It's all that I was thinking.
We, we looked into that, Commissioner Boyle, in the beginning really because we were such in a, in a need, so to say. But we didn't really have anyone who, who wanted to step forward.
Well, I should've, should've known you checked into it. One of the things that struck me, I think they were doing it in Seattle, I'm not sure what city, but they did buy, instead of having hotels, they bought, they bought an apartment building that was fully, you know, had a kitchen and all that, all that sort of thing. And I wonder whether if we did that, you know, if we bought a building that was an apartment building that was sufficiently in size and so forth, you know, we could clean it up and turn around and perhaps sell it. I don't know in this economy whether we could or not, but it's just a suggestion that it may be, and maybe, Commissioner Morgan's here, he's a guy in the apartment business. I don't know if he's, if that occurred to him or not, but it may be something that we want to explore on your behalf.
Can I just say, this is really only a small piece. I think MATCH is actually thinking about congregate shelters and so on. They are, they really are in that space. It's not, the health department is really just the gap filler because that's what the county is when, when these things happen. So your idea is a good one, but it's not the space where the health department needs to be in.
The only other thing a request I'd make is that I'm always impressed with the Douglas County City of Omaha operators that answer at the, at the health center, that answer in person, usually a couple of rings and then I ask for what I want and they get me connected. I, I am disheartened by some of the offices that I call that government offices and have, don't have a human. It's very frustrating. So I would, if you can possibly put a couple of humans answering the phone and get the calls transferred, I'd love it, but that's, that's a lot of work. But anyway, that's my last thought. I can't tell you how, you know, I'd, I'd like to see you do with the budget for the whole thing for us because you really, really nailed it. So thank you very much, Doctor. It's another case of excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Everything other than she's the face of the virus, other than that, those are all good comments.
Yeah, pardon me.
Commissioner Morgan.
Paul, thank you and thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation that you gave us today. Just a couple of things on the mental health, I'd ask to call Region Six. We do have a crisis counseling program that's going to be starting. It was similar to, it's called Nebraska Strong. We did it, brought it up during the flooding that occurred. And so we've kind of revamped it for that purpose. And they will again, you know, take the phone calls, they'll listen, they'll give resources, be of all the resources to individuals that need those. And we've also done the first aid, mental health training. So if you could just reach out to, to them.
And we have actually made that referral on our information line.
Good.
So that people do know where to call.
And then as far as, you know, there is a big difference between non-congregate sheltering and rental assistance programs. And I'm glad we've worked very hard through MATCH, who's done an outstanding job with all of the shelters with weekly calls and walking through issues and walking through concerns of how to kind of retrofit their existing facilities to handle individuals that came up with a positive COVID test, how to quarantine them, how to isolate them. And then there is conversation about building on Santa Francis House's campus to, to kind of tag as that kind of a facility for the future. But I'm glad to see that we have some dollars in here for the hotel rooms, which I think worked out fairly well for what we had to put together so quickly. So, but again, I appreciate, again, Randy McCoy's here from MATCH, who is our executive director, if you'd like to ask him any questions about that. But again, thank you very much.
May I speak?
Right after Commissioner, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, Mary Ann, for the public, would you let them know what MATCH is?
The Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless and just for purposes of reporting, I am on their board.
Okay. Cause you know how I feel about acronyms? And then when we get to the part, and I don't know if that's on today's agenda, to supplement or add money to a rental assistance, I do believe that we should use existing organizations instead of creating our own.
We'll, we'll get to that item, we'll get to that item in just a few minutes, Mark.
I'll wait. I'll be patient.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you. Dr. Poor, thank you very much for your presentation and, and I think this is all in order, you know, with the health department. I don't think in this case, and I know Chris has a lot of expertise and has been close to this, you know, we want to use Deloitte to be sure that we're following all the guidelines. But at the same time with the health department, I think we're on pretty safe footing that this is the way it should be done with what you've requested and shown us here today. So I thank you for your presentation and we'll keep moving it forward.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Other, other questions or comments to this item? Does the board wish to do anything today?
Thank you.
I think we should take them each individually. And, and we have a motion to approve item, item A. Commissioner Rogers? Second, all right, and it's second by Commissioner Rogers. Further questions or comments? The motion is at the total of 13,451,308.
Thank you.
Could we please vote?
I vote yes.
Well, unfortunately I can't see who hasn't voted, but I do have a commissioner who did not get their vote in.
Did you get mine?
Well, I got yours. I just, one of the commissioners present, I did not get their. Actually, Commissioner Kavanaugh, do you vote yes? All right. Motion passes. Six voting yes in person, one voting yes virtually.
I, I apologize, we did have a speaker that didn't notice when I said, are there any questions or comments? But we'll have more opportunities here, I believe. Next up on the agenda is the treasurer's office, Mr. Ewing. Good morning, John.
Good morning. Before I start with the presentation, I'd like to tell a few people thank you. Certainly Dr. Poor and her staff for the plan that they put together and all of the phone calls we made about things to try to make sure we kept our staff safe. And I'm proud to report that we had no one out of 105 employees actually test positive, but we followed all of their recommendations during that time.
They have been a great resource for all of us. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely. Also, I'd like to thank Joe Lorenz. We worked with him quite a bit on this, trying to make sure we followed what we're changing rules and things as we put this together. And Jerry Leahy and Public Properties for their efforts in securing our windows and counters so that we can keep the citizens and our employees safe when we reopen next week. And then also Eric Carlson for his guidance as we went through this as well. So with that, I will tell you that we also did 236,412 transactions during the three months that we were closed to walk in traffic. So contrary to a lot of thoughts about the treasurer's office being closed and people not working, we actually did 236,000 transactions. We also were able to serve every customer that requested service from us. So no one was denied service because we weren't open to walk in traffic. So I just wanted to say those two things. One of the things we knew probably was going to happen and we were very disappointed, but not surprised, was our phone system, which I don't know if you remember this, Commissioner Duda, but I actually spoke to you about that phone system prior to taking office as the treasurer. So we had a 13 and a half year old phone system that basically failed us. We were able to replace that phone system and we've actually gotten a number of compliments from citizens about the ability to be able to get through and get their calls and questions answered now. So that was $45,000 to get that phone system and be able to increase our capacity and our ability to provide customer service. I can go through this whole list if you all want, but I believe you have it, or I can just go through some of the major things that we have. What would you prefer?
At least go through the major things so that everybody watching knows what we're talking about.
Absolutely, absolutely. So the next major thing that we have on the list is office supplies. One of the things that happens when you change the way you do business is that you have to adapt and make sure you have the resources necessary for our employees to be able to provide that service. And all of these expenses that I'm going to go through actually went through my chief deputy, Tim Kavanaugh and myself, along with the people I mentioned earlier, before we ever put them in the category of requesting money for COVID. But we spent about $51,214. One of the things we also spent money on was drop boxes. We saw that some of the other treasurers around the state were putting drop boxes outside of their facilities. And we think that will serve us well to have drop boxes outside the facilities so that people can put their transactions in a secure box. so that people can put their transactions in a secure box, then similar to a mailbox, and then be able to get those transactions processed the very next day and in the mail that day as well. What we're trying to do with that is reduce the number of people who will be in our lobbies. If we don't, then we won't be able to do anything with social distancing or anything to help ensure that our customers are safe. So, we want to do everything we can to encourage people who don't need to come in to find other ways to utilize us. And so, we spent eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars for drop boxes at each location. So, each location was a little bit over, probably, twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars and a total of eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. We also purchased stanchions so that we can do a better job of making sure we can keep people separated and get more people in our lobby and still try to do the social distancing. And that was eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Because we were mailing most of the transactions, and we believe this, thirty-two thousand dollars that I'm about to explain will take us through the end of the year. We spent about thirty-two thousand dollars for envelopes to be able to mail registrations or plates or whatever back to the citizens once their transaction was done. And we believe that will last us through the year. We purchased a great number of masks, and we will have them available at our customer service centers as people come in for those who would like to wear them. We are not going to try to make it mandatory, but we would like people to consider the safety of others when they come into the office. And we believe that supply should last us through the end of the year as well, even if there is a second wave that they're talking about in the fall. And that was fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and I believe it was thirty thousand masks.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand masks. So, we believe that will last us for a period of time. We also had some stands that we implemented so that people can see more clearly the instructions and things of that nature, as well as, we had some overtime because it's a little bit more difficult to process some of these transactions when you're emailing back and forth with citizens and calling them on the phone and not getting what you need. It takes a little bit longer than if everything was in order. But that was primarily for new vehicles, and prior to this, there was no way to register a new vehicle without it actually having that customer come into the office. So, we had to adapt and figure out a way to make it happen, simply because, one, they wanted to register their vehicle, but, two, that's a significant amount of revenue when you look at property tax portion of it as well as the sales tax. So, we felt it was important that we make sure we got those vehicles registered. And then, when we open, we are going to have security at the customer service centers for just a few days, just to make sure everything goes smoothly and we don't have any problems. So, that is eleven thousand, six hundred and three dollars for the first two weeks. So, with that, I'll ask if you have any questions.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I have questions.
All right, we'll get to you in a minute, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, John. Where's the amounts for the stands and overtime?
Oh, I'm sorry. For overtime, it was seven thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars. And for stands, it was one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, when did you put the phone system in?
We put the phone system in June, was that the twelfth?
Two weeks ago.
Yes, two weeks ago. I can't remember the exact date, but it was on a Friday going into Saturday morning. So, it's been in...
Do you still have the same absolutely terrible answering system?
No, it is a completely new phone system.
That includes the answering, so I didn't have to push run for twelve?
Yes, that includes everything.
Okay, I'm going to have to try it out because I
Okay.
had numerous complaints on the old one over the years, and we brought that up. Then on the phone system, I think that should be eaten by your department because I could see that creating the same amount as seventy-one-month rentals. And we can always approach that later, but right now, I think rentals are extremely important. So, I will not vote for the full amount. I would vote for the amount less than forty-five thousand dollars. Now, I know I can't make a motion because I'm not there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kraft. I, I'll get to you in a second, Mike. I've got to say, on the phones, I'm glad you put them in.
We had no choice.
Well, the pandemic, when all of a sudden you've got a marginal phone system going into it, and suddenly everything has to...
Everybody's calling instead of using the website and things like that and not being able to get through.
And then having the phones go down even for a day was just, I mean, that's so frustrating to so many people. And I know the late fees have been waived by the state and everything, but a number of constituents were reaching out to us with their frustration. And, you know, you and Tim were always great at handling everybody that came to me. But I also recognize how much frustration there was on the part of the public.
Oh, absolutely. And I would just point out that with this phone system, it did take us a while to get it approved through the CARES Act. And then, secondly, for them to get the parts ordered and get everything ready. And then we were going to put it in on June 4th, and we had the potential protests downtown. So, we didn't want to have people in this building that night, so we moved it back a week. So, it's been a tough deal trying to make sure we could get it done.
Thank you.
And if I may, the phone system, I'm not saying it's not, wasn't needed. I'm not saying it's a good idea. I'm saying that, right now, I think we should not fund it, and it should come out of your budget, because I think it's more important to keep people in homes.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
John, I want to say, I didn't receive any calls. I had the media call me a couple of times, and I just said, "I haven't heard a thing about people." But I understand when those things happen, there's not really anything you can do. Just try to recover, as you did, and you really did. So, you did a good job. The, does your new phone system, Mark was asking this, I know it kind of gives a, you've got a, I always call them robots, answering the phone. Do you have a human or do you have a recording?
No, we have a number of people downstairs that answer the phones. And so, very rarely, under normal circumstances, are people getting that recording.
Okay, great.
When you have a ton of people calling and redialing, those type of things, trying to get an answer, and I don't necessarily blame them for trying to get an answer.
Right.
But that creates a problem.
Sure.
So, we had people calling and couldn't even get into the queuing system. Our folks couldn't even use their office phones to call out because the phone system just jammed everything up.
What services can people do online now regarding license?
I can go, I can go through that whole list for you and tell you that you can pay property tax and motor vehicle renewals through the mail, first of all. That's free for property tax and only a dollar for mail registrations, because we charge that to cover the cost of the envelopes and the postage. Then, for property tax and motor vehicles, you can do that online.
Okay.
You also can do both of those over the telephone when we don't have a system that's completely wiped out.
Right.
And now, we also have made those drop boxes available outside the customer service centers and inside the customer service centers if people don't want to wait, so they can put it in and then get it processed the next day. So, those are the things you can do without standing in line today.
Okay. Well, let me ask you about the branches. How many, what branches do you have that are open now?
None are open now. They will be open officially next Monday.
And which, where are they located?
Fiftieth and G.
Right.
Hundred and Forty-Fourth and U.
Okay.
Thirtieth and about Forest Lawn.
Okay.
Eighty-Fourth and Cass.
Okay.
And one hundred, Fifty-Third and Maple in the Fitzgerald Building.
Right, okay. Have you given any thought, I mean, I'm not, any planning to the idea perhaps, you know, because I know DMV is just about nonexistent here anymore, but have you given any thought to closing any of the branches? I mean, are they really that necessary with all the options that we have to obtain licenses and so forth?
You know, that's an easy thought. The problem is, we still have people that come into those customer service centers, and they expect to be able to do that.
Yeah.
They also are very crowded those last couple of days of the month. So, if you close them, what you would be doing is basically putting more people into fewer customer service centers on those last few days, because no matter what we try, we still have to be available for the citizens. I would love if nobody came in on the last day.
Yeah.
Or the second-to-last day, but that is not what generally happens.
Okay. All right, I just asked that because...
Sure.
And then I want to ask an unrelated question, of course, and that is, I had to get my driver's license. And it was okay, I went to Fifty-Sixth and Ames, but I went to a hundred and, I'll say, Highway 370 and Forty-Eighth Street first. And of course, I was told that was in Omaha, and I said, "No, this isn't Omaha. This is Bellevue or something, Petillian." But anyway, there's only presently, only one location where you can get your driver's license renewed, and that's at Fifty-Sixth and Ames. And then I think they're opening something out in Mary Ann's territory, Hundred and Seventy-Seventh and France Avenue or something.
Okay, so, thank you for bringing that up. Let me remind...
Let me interrupt real quick, sorry. Focus on Zoom. There's a lot of noise right now. If you could please mute yourselves. Thank you.
Just a reminder to everyone that driver's licenses, state IDs, or anything to do with driving are the State of Nebraska Department of Motor Vehicles, not the Treasurer's Office. I had no input on their locations, and I do know they will be opening one at Hundred and Sixty-Eighth and Dodge shortly, if it's not already open.
Okay, well, that's, Hundred and Sixty-Eighth and Dodge is a hundred and forty-two blocks from my home.
I didn't make those decisions.
No, I, who did? Does the DMV still have a director?
They have a director, and that director reports to the governor.
Okay, well, what is his or her name, the director?
Rhonda Lamb.
Rhonda? Okay, well, how many do they have in Lancaster County, eighteen or nineteen?
I believe they only have one.
I'll be darned. Okay, well, thanks. I just wanted to have that information because I think it's ridiculous. Thanks a lot. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
And Tim, thank you for all the help you always give me, too. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan.
Right-hand man, you've been doing a great job, and I've been to several of your offices over the last two months, actually, and have seen your team of people just doing an outstanding job and working hard, and I'm very appreciative of your service to the public. The phone system, I'm supportive of it. It was not in your budget.
No.
And we have to be careful about that, because if a new phone system was in a budget,
Exactly.
then it won't meet the guidelines, and that's important to state here for people that think maybe that was in their budget or something like that. So, I will be supporting that, and I know you put the Plexiglas up, and I assume that would be something we'd be reimbursing you for.
That is through Jerry Leahy's budget, but he did do that through CARES money as well.
Good. I just want to be sure of that. And again, I thank you both for what you do and the service you give out, and look forward to next Monday. And I have had some calls.
Sure.
But Tim always, unfortunately, has me to send them on to him. And I appreciate you always responding and the people then thanking me about it, so.
And just for informational purposes, we will be doing a press conference tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at the Fitzgerald home, so that we can show the citizens all of the different features and all of the different things that they can do to utilize the Treasurer's Office more effectively and efficiently, really for them, as much as anything. During this whole time, we did do at least six or seven press releases. And the only real mention the Treasurer's Office got during this whole thing was when Commissioner Duda actually gave information about what was going on in our office. So, instead of doing another press release, we're doing a press conference, and hopefully, the media will cover it.
Very good. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ewing. This is great. You've done a superb job during this crisis. I've utilized the services of your office and found them to be almost indistinguishable from regular operating. So, I know that was not easy, and the fact that you did it without having a single COVID case reported in all of your offices is additionally commendable. Thank you. I think this is a great proposal, and I want to commend you for putting it together, including invoices for various items, which we don't see on any of the others. There are tens and twenties and thirty times what you're talking about, but you give us actual invoices that show where the money's going. Regarding the phone thing, I know, because we worked together on the Public Safety Bond renovation of Hundred and Fifty-Sixth and Maple, that you have all new phone services there. Is that correct?
Yes, and we're also, through our budget, getting that same type of phone service for the other customer service centers as well. And we also added another line to the customer service centers out of our budget, so we didn't just bring everything here and say, "Oh, can you guys pay for it?"
Okay, so, all of these technologies will be compatible with each other.
Yes.
The bane of my existence is buying something that doesn't work with something else. And so, I appreciate that and commend you for your heads-up, forward-looking management of that. I think this is a very appropriate and actually pretty modest ask, and I would be happy to support that.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments to this presentation? What is the pleasure of the board? Okay, and the amount in the motion?
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-six?
Yes.
Good. All right. So, we have a motion and a second for two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, four ninety-six dollars to the Treasurer's Office.
Yeah, I'm sorry. While I was trying to find the Treasurer's number, I missed who made the motion in second.
Commissioner Boyle made the motion, and Commissioner Kavanaugh made the second.
All right, thank you. Okay.
And I vote no.
Commissioner Morgan, how do you vote? That's, okay. Motion passes. Six voting yes, Commissioner Kraft voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Public Properties presentation, capital improvement projects at the Health Center and the Corrections Department. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jerry Leahy, Public Property. Just a couple of comments to lighten it up a little bit. Let me just say that it's very difficult to follow two of the brightest stars in Douglas County, Dr. Poor and John Ewing. I've worked well with both of them. Try the best to succeed for their wishes during these tough times and other times. So, with that, let me say that we were here a couple of weeks ago to present our capital improvement projects at both the 24/7 operations, the Douglas County Health Center and Douglas County Corrections. So, this entire time, we have focused on what we can do to improve both of those facilities for pandemic-related situations, mostly to do with air, movement of air, removal of air, creating negative air flows in those facilities. When we were here two weeks ago, we did listen to your comments and concerns, and we've revised the list, and as far as the Health Center, the infrastructure upgrades to the systems, you know, are going to provide a new pandemic-ready HVAC system. So these are capital improvements, there isn't many items that you can reduce, when are you going to redo? If you think of your residential property or some private commercial property, you, if you're going to replace a 30, 40-year-old unit of a furnace or an air conditioner, you're probably going to do them both. This is very similar. So moving down the line on the request, and these are all COVID-19 related, automatic faucets in residence rooms, nurse stations throughout the facility, provide four isolation rooms for a future second wave, so to speak, of the COVID-19. This has been happening around the country, where you add staff showers and stayover rooms to accommodate your staff during a horrible breakout, and that would be a definite upgrade and qualified through the CARES Act. Create new, or renovate existing whirlpool rooms in 10 of the neighborhoods, which will be, again, COVID-19 related, for better cleanliness, sterilization, et cetera. The other big capital item is the renovation of the entrance to the Health Center to remove the flow of the public and the patients that come in there for pharmacy pickups. We would do a separation of doors in and out to prevent any kind of a crossover or a contamination that could occur with someone that does not come in properly masked. Again, automatic faucets in the residence rooms, nurse stations, and then obviously the air handling replacements throughout the Health Center. Automatic faucets in the residence rooms, and, again, air handling units throughout, various wings with the automatic faucets, which is an upgrade, to eliminate possible contamination from staff to patients or residents, and to support all of these systems with upgrades for controls of the capital improvements that we put in. The total up is this, if this facility is 12 million, 578,000. We have submitted this list actually to Deloitte. Last Friday, we had a conference call, a Zoom call, I guess, with Jill Rens, Patrick, Jeff and I, and went over this list, and as we complete the presentation today, I'd like to ask that you vote pending, vote yes, pending the approval of Deloitte, so it's not just a thought of Jeff and I, it's a vetted process, and we feel COVID-19 qualified, but Deloitte hopefully will confirm it. So with that, I'll let Jeff take over on Corrections, he's a little more familiar with the capital improvements down there.
Questions on the Health Center portion of this before Correction?
All right, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And thanks for this, Mr. Leahy, I've been looking forward to seeing what we were going to do with our Health Center, because, well, for our discussion yesterday at the Health Center trustees meeting, it's recognized that long-term cares are hotspots in Nebraska, I've been maintaining that for some time, and this is going to alleviate that. One of the things that I've seen as suggested best practices going forward related to COVID, to make health centers healthier when they have long-term care facilities, is the installation of individual washroom toilet facilities in each residence room, that shared toilet facilities is considered to be one of the main vectors of infection. Have we looked into that relative to the Douglas County Health Center's rooms, which I don't believe have individual toilets, unlike a lot of hospitals that I've been in?
I'll let Jeff speak to that, I think we have done some in the past, and it depends on the residence care, whether that's within the room, and the size of the rooms, but let me defer that one to Jeff. A comment that I'd like to make on yesterday's Board Trustees' Meeting, as I stated earlier, we have focused on the capital of the Health Center and Corrections and the 24/7s. Everyone in the facility will benefit from these capital upgrades, which includes CMHC. And with that, we had also talked to Sherry Glassnap, the Director, about her concerns, and we actually have a meeting set up with Sherry tomorrow with an architect to go over her wishes.
That's great.
Jeff?
Just so folks can, County Clerk Dan Ash just had a request to pull up some of the handouts that we've been talking about, and this is the one that Public Properties submitted.
Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. Since we have this on the screen, just a review of what Jerry just stated, we have the infrastructure for air conditioning components, automatic faucets for patients.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm just following up on this one question.
Oh, okay.
Relative to the toilet facilities, the consideration of toilet facilities in the individual residence rooms, as has been recommended by HHS and CDC, is one of the main things that you can do to bring down contagion in long-term care facilities. Have we looked at toilet facilities in the residence rooms?
We have. Mostly, every room does have a toilet facility, some are not ADA compliant. We studied that, but trying to get that completed within the deadline of December 30th, I don't think that's, I don't think we can accomplish that, but it's on our thoughts about trying to resurrect that.
Okay, so my understanding is, you commit to these programs, whether they're completed by December 30th is not the point, the commitment of the funds in 2020, you know, and you're talking to the Deloitte people anyhow, you're saying that everything on this list would actually be completed in the calendar year 2020?
That's what we're trying to accomplish, yes.
And you're saying that the toilets in individual residence rooms could not be completed in calendar year 2020?
Correct.
And have we had, like, people bid on these to give us an estimate relative to that happening?
We could certainly do that, but like, D Wing, the west wing of the Health Center.
Yeah.
Floors one through four need to be renovated, and you're talking about shifting people around.
It's just one thing that we might want to look at, because it's high on the list of everybody who's talking about bringing down contagion in long-term care facilities, is toilet facilities need to be segregated, need to be contained.
We can certainly look at that, but there is that deadline of December 30th.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Before we move to the jail, I just want to throw in, on behalf of the Health Center, we went out and, on very short notice when this pandemic began, to get equipment to create negative pressure in many of the residence rooms out there, and we were early enough that we were able to get the equipment to do it before it all disappeared, before everybody figured out that they needed it, and I commend our staff for that. But we have had six deaths down there from our residents at the Health Center, this is a big deal, this is where we are the most impacted in the county, and so working with the air handling system, to me, is a real good thing that we have already demonstrated the need for, and now to be able to do it on a permanent basis and make the whole facility safer, this is a very good thing, so I'm excited to see this one move forward. Thank you.
That's correct, we did, we went out and purchased negative air machines to help control the infected wings, we set up a barrier at the entrances, so we did, the negative air machine, what it does is pull the air out to create a negative space, so the air's not just recirculating. So we did accomplish that in four wings, I think, three wings. The Corrections Center project, again, we're talking about the infrastructure for the air conditioning components, replacing the air handler with 100% outside air, a filtration system, which is a HEPA filter, which claims to be somewhere 99.9% filtering, and then some air cleaning components. And then the infrastructure upgrades for the building management controls for that system is also listed here to bring it up to date, so we can actually control the flows from the computer. And with that, the cost at the Corrections Center is $5,388,435. The total package that we are presenting today is $17,966,684. With that, is there any further questions?
Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you. In the, what happened to the boilers?
Got taken out.
We took it out.
What was the cost of those, do you remember? A million apiece or so?
No, under $200,000, I believe.
I thought one of them was a million, I don't know why, but anyway. So what was the total savings when you took the boilers out? And I guess I'm curious, Jeff, you took the boilers out, there's probably people asking questions, but I just, I just really wonder with, I suppose the negative air machines or whatever that is, that can be justified, but these look suspiciously like just regular improvements, you know? And.
Well, again, it gets back to air quality control for health centers, healthcare facilities, and reintroducing air back into the facility.
Well, in item number one of the Health Center, the, what's, it's not really broken down, but you got a plant water softener, what's water softener got to do with?
Well, water, it's a chilled water plant.
No, it says plant water softener.
Right, so we soften the water, so it doesn't scale on the, on the piping throughout the facility.
For a chilled water system?
Yes.
Okay, so that's to help stop?
Well, it all has to do with the air conditioning component, we have a chilled water plant that feeds the whole Health Center, and these are components that feed the air conditioning components.
Okay, there's an item for 700,000 that has to do with whirlpool rooms, what's that?
The whirlpool rooms was a suggestion from the Health Center, and we're trying to comply with the infection control requirements from the state and federal guidelines.
I can feel this one a little bit. Because this is one the foundation has been involved with a little bit for many years, knowing of the need. What we have now, the old, the very old tubs we have, you have to use a hoayor lift to get the resident into, it takes more labor, more contact points, more places you got to clean between every resident, it takes longer to bathe the resident, the new tubs are walk-in, you don't have to lift the resident up in the air, so they're safer, you have less points of contact for them, and it's easier to clean between uses.
So that's related to COVID?
Absolutely.
And Clarifmy may comment later. Then, the last item is, on that front page is, let's see, it's the $1,020,000, it's, let's see, two air handling units, it's awfully small, but let's see what it says here, replace chilled water distribution, replace, so that's the same thing, that's the air handling and all that other stuff, huh?
Correct.
Well, what I'm trying to do is find some money in here that, you know, I just, I have a feeling that some of these are just, are really upgrades that need to be done at the facility that have nothing to do with COVID, you know, I mean, I.
I understand, but we did.
I'd like to see that money go for rental assistance or something else, you have a lot of people that are getting evicted, and when you talk about taking away $17 million, now I don't know whether there's a separate category for this or what, but that's kind of what I'm looking at, is I'm trying to get as much cash as we can get and use it for people purposes, I know these are people, too, obviously, but, and then on, let's see, the last one is, the dollar amount is $932,000, and copy, you can't read what it, I can't read what it says, it looks like infrastructure upgrades to systems that support the new proposed pandemic-ready HVAC systems and upgrade remaining HVAC controls to DDC, whatever that is, including new building, blah, blah, blah.
It all has to do with the controls of the new equipment. Right now, there's pneumatic controls, which are old, you don't design a building anymore with pneumatic controls.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, the fatal word you mentioned for me was old.
Well, when you put in a new system, you're not going to reuse old control systems.
So I mean, what that means to me is that, you know, this is something that should have been done anywhere, needs to be done anyway, is what I'm driving at.
That's correct, and we have on our cap list out so many years to start replacing these, we did one in Kavanaugh already, we replaced air handler, that was $720,000, two years ago.
These are already on your list to replace, is that what you're saying?
Not this year.
No, but I mean, they're on your list.
Correct, we're looking at them.
But not this budget.
But, you know, if we have a million-dollar cap and 700,000 is.
What's that?
If we have a million-dollar cap for our capital improvement, and a project is 720,000, it doesn't leave much for anything else to do.
No, I just, please don't, I'm not taking it as totally as criticism, I'm just saying that it seems like these are things that, you know, it's just like, it's like the boilers, you know, they got knocked out for a reason, I don't know what it was, I suppose it.
Well, we concentrated on air conditioning, more so than heating components.
By the amount of the boilers?
Yes.
Okay. Then in Corrections, how many cases did we have of inmates having the virus, do you know?
I don't believe we had one, Mike Myers here? Um, I don't believe we had one. Mike Myers here?
Didn't even.
We've not, move ahead.
Do we have any, Mike? Sorry, I got a red light now.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yes.
I'm Mike Myers, Director of Corrections. We have had, um, three people who have come in who previously had the virus, um, before they were booked into the jail. We did isolate them out of taking in a, extra precautions, um, but we have not spread, uh, had any cases originate from within the jail at this point.
Thank you very much. See, and that, that's kind of what I thought. I thought some people came in with it, but, uh, they did. You know, I mean, part of the deal is that Mr. Myers and, uh, the, they developed some plans with UNMC. They didn't have anybody, you know, inmates that had the disease. So, uh, we're proposing spending, uh, five million dollars, five point three million to correct a problem that doesn't exist over there.
Well, we concentrate on the twenty-four seven operations that if you did have a pandemic.
Right.
It would be hard to control.
I understand that, Jeff, and please, I'm not, I'm just saying I'm, I've got my cheap hat on. I'm cheap. And I'm looking for more cash to give to people that are in real trouble, mom and pop stores and, and individuals at home and so forth, but, okay.
No, I understand.
The red light's going. You folks, let me just make it real clear. You folks do a wonderful job, a hell of a good job. Please don't take my comments as criticism. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I don't interpret that there are no, uh, COVID positive cases at the jails, meaning they don't have a problem. That it means they're just doing a fantastic job of managing.
That's exactly right.
Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm glad Commissioner Boyle, um, actually said what he said at the end because, um, while, um, we're, we're looking at what will help quote our residents, um, the most, these are our residents. These are our people. These are the most vulnerable. Um, and to me, it is our responsibility, if we're going to continue to operate that facility, that we make sure that we have them in the safest places possible. So do I like having to spend money on those things? No. But making sure that we have the proper airflow, that we have the proper, um, faucets so they don't have to touch them, that we have the proper, um, bathing equipment. That is, that is essential, in my opinion, as well as this other stuff. So, um, I, I'm just glad you said that because again, it, the, the long-term care facility belongs to us. The people who live in there are our residents, and it is our responsibility to take care of them. So, um, I think this is all necessary and unfortunately necessary. Um, but I want to make sure, again, that our precious elderly are taken care of.
That's a very good point, Commissioner Borgson, and I frankly would extend it a little bit to the jail. Part of our job, uh, as a county is we do have vulnerable populations that we are responsible for. We are responsible for the safety of the staff and inmates in our jail. And we absolutely want to provide them the safest possible environment that we can. And when we have an opportunity like this to make it a better environment and, and doesn't even cost property taxpayers any money, this, this is a good thing, I think. Commissioner Boyle?
I, I, I realize that.
And I do wish to speak.
All right, you'll be next, Mark.
Okay. I, I know I'm ogre of the month, but I, I, I don't disagree with anything that any, anyone said, Commissioner Borgson or you, Commissioner Duda, but I'm just saying that these are, these are things that we should be doing anyway. And, um, that they should go through a regular process. I don't know that these jump out as COVID-related in my book. There's something else that I'd like to see added at the Douglas County Health Center, and that is something I saw on television where there's a, I think it's, I'm not sure where it is, maybe it's in Millard. But they added a, a way for the residents to get outside to talk to family. They're not trying to talk through a glass and all that. And I don't know what, how that all worked, but boy, it was really nice to see those elderly people being able to be so close to their family. So if there's anything we can do to support that, I'd be glad, because that to me is definitely COVID, you know? But I'm sorry to be the ogre, but I just kind of, I think it's something we should be doing anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Craft?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I've scrutinized this list, and I agree with it.
With what?
Just like I scrutinized the treasurer's list and wanted to remove the forty-five thousand dollars so that we can put additional money into housing. Because every dollar we spend is a dollar we can't spend someplace else. Uh, i- if we read what UTAC wants, and that's about thirty-six million dollars for rental assistance, and we subtract everything we spent today, I had it written out here, hold on. We, we would be left with about sixty million dollars, counting twenty, that's counting, deducting the twenty-five million for the city. It's amazing how fast this can go. So from a hundred and sixty-six million to ninety-six million to potentially sixty million in the blink of an eye. So I do support this. I think every one of these is essential because, as we all know, we are the last resource for taking care of these people. They are dependent upon our medical, health, and facilities. If we don't take care of the people in our custody, we are failing. The other thing is we have to remember that we were elected to represent the county and the county's constituents. The city council represents the city and the city's constituents. Now, the, one of the things people forget is if I have to spend a tax dollar, or it's, how can I phrase this? Whether it's a county or a city tax dollar is still a tax dollar. Whether it's a county or a city tax dollar saved is still a tax dollar saved. And as I said, we were elected to represent the county and the citizens within the county and to run an efficient and effective government and to make sure the people within our care are well cared for. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Craft. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Um, I want to commend public property and the folks at Douglas County Health Center and Douglas County Corrections for putting together this, uh, list. Um, I support it. Uh, I think that what we do at the Douglas County Health Center is the best thing that Douglas County does. It's the crown jewel and the Douglas County government's crown. And what we do at the Correction Center is an unfortunate necessity of public safety. So the fact that we're addressing those two, um, populations who are in our care um, and unable to leave in the event of a pandemic is essential, public health. Uh, and I, I want to commend public property people for this very, um, important list. The, the fact that, you know, the list for the Health Center, uh, is twelve million, the list for the, uh, Correction Center is five, is, I think in part due to the Health Center's campus is much older than the Correction Center campus. And, um, the, um, Health Center just recently experienced scores of positive COVID cases during this pandemic and deaths. Unfortunately, uh, we haven't had that same experience at the Correction Center, which I think we only have had a handful of, of COVID deaths. And I commend the, the administration at the Correction Center for their heads-up, uh, way of, of getting in front of this and preventing it. So this is very justified, long overdue. Thank you. Let's get on with it.
Thank you. Other comments from other Commissioners? Would anybody from the public wish to comment? This is, this is your opportunity.
Thank you. My comments would pertain to all four of these items on this.
Please state your name, Doug, for the record.
Okay. Good morning, Doug Kagan, representing Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. Our considered opinion is that county commissioners should distribute federal coronavirus stimulus, stimulus funds only for purposes closely related to and directly impacted by the COVID ID, COVID nineteen outbreak. Examples include government personnel directly at risk, such as medical and law enforcement personnel and other first responders and caretakers who come into contact with coronavirus victims and patients, and the victims and patients themselves, also Health Department services. Only local government entities should distribute these funds. If such entities, like Lutheran Family Services, which should provide interpreter services, they, as a private concern, should provide these services themselves. We do not understand why the, we still don't understand why the Treasurer's Office would require a forty-five thousand dollar upgraded phone system or nine hundred twenty-nine dollars for thermometers. Likewise regarding Health Center chillers and air handling units, items which we actually found on a recent two thousand and fifteen building maintenance project list. So it seems to us that some of these things are just being stuffed in, uh, to get the money. Similarly regarding new building control systems at the Correction Center, we definitely take exception to the distribution of one million dollars for rental assistance. Commissioners already have allocated dollars at general assistance for this purpose. Certainly there exist county residents having difficulty paying their rent as a secondary situation resulting from a primary situation like suffering unemployment. However, there are thousands of other citizens similarly suffering financial hardship, difficulty paying mortgages, paying utility bills, and paying their property taxes. County commissioners should not play favorites. Concentrate on judiciously distributing these funds to personnel and programs on the front lines fighting the effects of COVID nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Other comments?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you, Mr. Kagan. I agree with Mr. Kagan, uh, for somewhat slightly different reasons. Specifically now on number four, I seem to be excluded on that. I'm a property owner. I pay taxes. I happened to have to trade for two cars here recently, and I was totally shocked at the taxes levied onto those two older vehicles. And it looks like they based it on the manufacturer's suggested retail price when it was new. Now, don't, please don't interrupt me.
Well, I'd like to focus on the, the topic here rather than licensing your.
That's why I'm focusing on that.
Thank you.
I can't afford other things because of taxes. I can't afford other things because of the spending that obviously these other three items, those should have been taken care of on the normal course of your business. This is a sleight of hand because you've overspent. You want to use federal dollars, which excuse me, comes out of my pocketbook again, to cover expenses that should have been taken care of. Let's stop it.
Thank you. Other public comments? What is the will of the board? Can we, there's a second? Are you okay with saying this is pending Deloitte's approval?
Yes.
Jerry suggested this, and I would like that caveat, and, and it's a second, we're okay with that? Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, yeah, I've been sitting here. Listening after I made my comments about the questions I have, and I think, uh, I, I, you know, I very much support the Health Center and the well-being of Corrections and the Youth Center and all the places where we have people for twenty-four hours a day. But I, I really feel that these are things we should be doing ourselves out of a regular budget. And so I'm, I probably, I'm, I'm probably going to have to vote no.
We have known for years that we had poor air handling out at the Health Center, that there's a lot of room for improvement. And, and we've tried for a long time to address it, and, and it never makes it. It never makes the final cut of, when we're doing our capital improvements projects, we say, no, that's not a high enough priority. We don't want to raise taxes. We're, we're not going to do it. And, and so we do, I mean, we had to have people scrambling to try to make that a safe environment out there, as safe as possible for the pandemic, which is not over. And, and this is an opportunity, I think, to absolutely, uh, improve, improve the safety of that facility in a way that we never are going to get it done otherwise. Um, so. Uh, further questions or comments? We have a motion before us.
So, uh, Claire Cash has to clarify. The motion is approved?
Seventeen million, nine hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars for the Health Center and Corrections pending Deloitte's approval.
All right.
Well, that, uh, on Deloitte, how would the reporting?
Back to us, or how will that discussion go? I just wanted to know publicly we'd have some discussion or not.
I'd ask Joe to, to field that question. I've never talked to Deloitte myself, and I don't really plan on doing it. It, that's, it's our staff that has been.
Claire?
Meetings with them.
We have somebody on Zoom would like to ask a question.
All right, we'll get to them in a moment.
Yes, so what we're doing with Deloitte is we've been having calls and set up a process where we're submitting this list. We've, I actually did submit this list in front of us to Deloitte, and they're sending it to their CARES Act specialists to review. And, uh, they'll get back to us with any questions or whatever, and then based on that, they will give us their opinion as if this is a qualifying expense under the guidance.
And Commissioners, this is Patrick Bloomingdale. We will, uh, we will, if there's any questions or concern, if there's any concerns about any of these issues, we'll bring it back to the board before taking action. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, we wouldn't move forward unless we had all of those issues addressed.
Yeah, I, I think that's really good that we have that discussion at the board meeting.
Sure.
After you do that review and so on. And that air handling unit is, Commissioner Boyle asked, and I have some thoughts about that too. Um, that's never been in our budget in the capital improvement or anything else. It's just been a difficult.
It's always been on the wish list, but as Commissioner Duda said, we have a pretty long wish list that makes it difficult to get to without his point of having to increase the levy, which we're always trying not to do.
And I think it's important to say on that air handling unit there at the Health Center, the fact is, we know and we hear, and I don't know that I want to say that I know, but it seems to me this virus, even with the vaccination that we're hopeful for, it's going to be around definitely a while. I mean, I hear the people saying two years, three years, whatever. I hope that's not the case, but it, uh, could be. So that's why you're looking at this, I think.
I think in the fact that we actually had six fatalities because of the virus. If there's anywhere that's the front line that I think this money is going, as I read the act, that where you want to spend the money is where, you know, people actually were, died because of it.
That's, and I appreciate that, Joe, and the work that you've done, and I hear you on that, and we talked about it. So thank you.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to at least have that discussion here for the public.
Thank you. And I recognize Commissioner Craft said we have somebody waiting on Zoom, however, Commissioner Boyle asked if he could have a question for Joe.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Joe, I want to ask you, uh, how much, uh, how much of an increase in our mill levy would seventeen million dollars cost?
How much of it? Well, uh, every penny increase in the mill levy, I think, is worth, uh, four, uh, four million, I said.
Yes, so over four cents.
Four cents.
So it adds four cents to our mill levy?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we, you know, if this is as urgent as it is, and I believe it is to some extent, I mean, but it is something we should be doing anyway, and we should have done anyway. We can all look back. I'm as guilty as everybody. But I think we need to talk seriously about levying that, but it's, it's too late now because we're going to use COVID funds instead. That's, that's okay. I just wanted to ask.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, does somebody on Zoom have a question for us? This might be a challenge. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Do we have a, yeah, we do have the motion.
Yes.
Can, can I ask the question for?
Go ahead, Mark.
Emily Chen Newton asked the question that she said she would like to know if asks are going to be required in any of the county facilities receiving CARES Act money. are going to be required in any of the county facilities receiving CARES Act money.
I missed the first question.
Are masks going to be required in any facility that's getting CARES Act money?
We, our, our policy is to request that people wear masks, but not mandate. Some individual courtrooms and at times individual offices have made their own decisions to require masks, but the county never has required, we only request and offer free paper masks.
And Commissioners, if I can add to that, we have been told legally that it would take a court order or city ordinance or state law to require the public to wear masks in the facility. And Lancaster County had actually done that. They got a court order that required that, and then the governor issued his mandate, and then they backed off of that. So absent one of those three things happening, I don't think that we can mandate that the public wear masks.
No, no plans to do so. Both city attorney and county attorney have advised against that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Then I would call for the vote, please.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Boyle votes no, all other Commissioners voting yes.
It pains me to vote no, but I had to.
Thank you. Item four, General Assistance Department. Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thanks, gents.
And before, sorry, Commissioner Duda, just want to make sure you're aware that we do have some folks on Zoom who I know will want to talk about this particular item.
Okay. Item four, General Assistance Department allocations of, of $1 million for the provision of rental assistance to Douglas County residents who have suffered COVID-19 related financial hardship from Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. This is the beginning of what will probably be a series of direct assistance to COVID-impacted citizens and residents of Douglas County. It's a modest $1 million renters assistance request. The Health and Human Service Committee, working with the General Assistance Office, will move forward to direct how this will be administered. As you saw from the presentation of the Douglas County Health Department, for a much larger amount, theirs is a work in progress as well. And with about the same administrative capacity, they're going to probably end up partnering with an array of community for-profit, not-for-profit entities to deliver on their 13 million-plus program. So this 1 million for renters assistance, which counties across the country are already doing, is just the beginning of an initiative to bring some of the CARES money to actual COVID-impacted individuals as quickly as possible, whose rent comes due every first or fifteenth of the month, and they've already missed a couple of months probably because they're out of work. So in order to speed that process up, we would authorize $1 million to go forward. General Assistance will meet with the Health and Human Services Committee on Thursday. We will discuss the implementation of this going forward. I see that the Health Department has some initiatives relative to housing individuals in the community as well. Perhaps there could be some synergy in those initiatives. We currently have a rent assistance program in General Assistance. It's inadequate for our needs during the pandemic, and so we will have to use our emergency powers to adjust that. There's probably some need for additional personnel to help administer this outside of the General Assistance staff, and so we will have to look at partnering with community partners who have already stepped up, and I think you'll probably hear from a bunch of them here this morning, to say that they stand ready to help supplement what General Assistance can do in terms of an overall administration of a much needed progress, project. Renters assistance, utilities assistance, food and healthcare assistance are all things that COVID-impacted individuals in Douglas County need and so far have not received. And so in addition to the tens of millions of dollars that we've authorized today for various worthy programs, I voted for them, we need to do something to get money in people's pockets as soon as possible. People who have been out of work now for probably up to three months and are in need of our help. So in order to get that ball rolling, this very modest $1 million initial grant would go, and we would see about building on that going forward to bring help to people in need in Douglas County as the CARES Act was intended to do. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have. I noticed that General Assistance is here and we rely on them to give us the, you know, skeleton structure of administering a renters assistance program because they already do. And we would build out from that using, like I said, our capacities. Health departments requested funding for 20 temporary employees there. We could do the same with General Assistance for a renters assistance program. And partners in the community who have already stepped up and made themselves down as willing to help in administering this much-needed COVID-impacted assistance to renters in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. How many staff, you mentioned maybe hiring 20 new staff?
No, I mentioned that the Douglas County Health Department has hired 20 temporary staff as an example.
And we do something like the.
Of one of our departments that's already doing things like this, and has now come before us to ask for funding for those people.
How many staff do you think you would have to add?
That's a question that'll probably come up with the hearing on Thursday with the General Assistance Department.
Commissioners, if, I think I can add to that. If, you know, we've talked to Deloitte about this proposal, and, you know, if we go in this direction, some of the things that we've discussed is that it would be, who of us to use, to work with nonprofits who currently use, deal with federal funds, because it's a very complicated process. Any rental assistance would need to be paid directly to the landlord rather than to individual people as we do it currently with the General Assistance qualifying event. I mean, there's so much that goes into this as far as being able to have a process where people can show that they're rent burdened as a direct result of COVID rather than just being rent burdened absent COVID. So very worthy to do rental assistance, but it's very complicated. So we would want to work, we're actually going to meet with Deloitte tomorrow, Melissa and me and Joe, just to have some discussions about how to create, if, if this passes today, how to, how to create the appropriate process.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would hope that this doesn't pass today unless it's revamped a little bit, because I would ask, and if anybody can answer these that have already been talked about, yes, this is happening around the country. These programs are popping up through a bunch of counties, and I have many here as examples. Breevert County in Florida, Sonomish County in Washington, Ventura County in California, Collin County in Texas, Harris County in Texas. But they have a process. So I would ask, what's our criteria that we're going to use? What are the income, income guidelines based on? Is it our General Assistance guidelines? Is it a property level guideline? What are the eligibility's for, criteria for if they have received federal funds before? In, or state program assistance, are they eligible for additional rental assistance? What's that rental assistance based on? Is it a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, just a flat market rate? And what's our cap? And how many months? One month, two months, three months? And how are we going to determine whether it is COVID-related? OTAC had an excellent piece that they published in the paper regarding rental assistance for our community, and it was prior to the pandemic, which states 47% of renters in Omaha were rent burdened, meaning they spend more than 30% of their monthly income on rent. And this was based on the community survey, Census Bureau survey of 2019. And now with COVID, the figure is most likely higher. I'm not disagreeing, but how are we determining that? And again, if they were rent burdened prior, are we going to look at strictly that they were furloughed, that they lost their job, that they reduced their, I'm not saying this is a bad program. I am for rental assistance. I am for putting the 10 million, 20 million, whatever the figure was in to, to our distribution, to our dispersment pot. But we have to have this all outlined. We have to have an application process outlined, and we have to have either memorandums or understanding or contracts with organizations. And there's, there is a list of nine or 10 places or agencies that already do this type of administering of rental assistance program. Family Housing Advisory Service, Together Omaha, Heartland Family Services, Community Alliance, MATCH, Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless, Women's Center for Advancement, yes, Youth Emergency Services, St. Vincent DePaul Society, and there's probably more. And so I, I think instead of putting it in General Assistance budget, which again, it is not going into the hands of the people, it is to pay their landlords. It's not that they're GA eligible, because if they were, they'd be getting GA. But let's talk about what that criteria is, what are the eligibility requirements going to be, how long are we going to do it, what's the cap, and what are we basing it on? That's all I'm asking. If you want to have your committee meeting on Thursday and outline those things and come back with, here's how we're going to run our rental program, our rental assistance program, and come up with the figure, instead of this rush to get it into the General Assistance budget when we can't disperse it right now because we have no way of dispersing it, we have no way of approving it. And again, I'm all for this, but just not the way it is presented now. So if we want to say we want to put a pot of money in for rental assistance, which Commissioner Rogers and I had talked about at the beginning of the CARES Act presentation, when Joe brought the categories to us, that's, I'm great with that. I'm okay with that. But let's get a process down in our criteria, in our eligibility data points put in place, and an application put in place, approved by Deloitte, and move forward with it. That's what I would ask, and I don't think, I'm asking anything different than what you're asking, Commissioner Kavanaugh, other than it's actually going to get us to be a better program if we have those in, in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Indeed, I think we all do support the idea of using some of this for rental assistance, but the question is how. When you say the Health Department, when we say they brought on temporary employers, that was to trace people with COVID. I, I mean, this was for a new and sudden urgent need that they obviously could not have been staffed, geared up for ahead of time. That's a whole different ballgame than this. Here we are, it seems like, trying to recreate what's already out in the community, and I'm not sure what makes us think we can do it better than some of these fine organizations that already have a good track record within our community. I'm all for rental assistance, but I would prefer to go that route, that we put, say, the 10 million that, that is temporarily designated for rental assistance, that we put that into a pot, lay out what the criteria is, who's eligible, what their expectations are, and then they can apply through, through the portal. To, to go about it hulder-skelter and try to do it in-house, I, I just don't understand why we think that's a better way to go. Commissioner Rogers?
Melissa, can you come up? You already got a relationship, don't you, with, I think it's, to add what Commissioner Borgeson said somewhere, like the six to eight people that are in that, in the field doing this, you've got a steady relationship with them right now, right?
That is correct.
Do you think at the latest, I think we meet the first weekend in July, do you think you could put together something as early as next week, as late as two weeks to be able to present? Because what I, what I'd like to add on what Commissioner Borgeson is saying is that, you know, we've had a couple of calls, I think 10 is the base, and we got the amount set in reserve. So I think as, I've shared with some people, we're, we're all the way open if that need is there. What I'd like to, if you've got that relationship with them already, you all have the discussion about who you think is best there, and then when we make the decision, I'd rather, I, I would like to, you know, know who you're going to choose and then allocate them a pot to play with so they know where they're at and, and know where they're going. So is that, is that possible? Is that, is that unrealistic right now?
I think it's possible.
Excuse me, Melissa, because you said your name for the record.
Sorry, Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance. I definitely think it's possible. I have a lot of the same questions that Commissioner Borgeson said, just of what parameters we're looking at. I think once we have that down, we're going to be able to get the ball rolling very quickly. It's just knowing, I mean, all those questions that she listed, I have myself. So as soon as those are done, absolutely. It just depends on how quickly those could get answered.
Okay. Your gut reaction, well, how long you thinking that's, I guess I want to ask you on the length because this is where my thought process is on that. Because as I've explained to a couple of people, you have the people we already dealt with that were renting, renters stressed, housing stressed, and then you have these, the new people that are in the pot because of COVID. And we're just dealing with this pot here. I figure that because of it being COVID-related and then the date being March, most people would have already paid their March rent. So I just wanted to make sure there was some communication on how we're going to play this, and most likely when they submit this, we're likely looking at April, May, and June rents that we're possibly looking at maybe, maybe July. So there's a, there's an amount that we'd have to work through with them to some degree. So do you, what do you think is the quickest possible time for, depending on if you can get them or not, that we could turn this around?
It's, it's hard to say, just because I do not have an understanding of, we have to make sure that it's related to COVID. So I think once that's determined, and we have a meeting like Patrick said tomorrow, so hopefully we'll have some more guidance, obviously as quickly as possible because the need is there. I would say probably two weeks to have like a good foundation if this is our priority to get going, and all the hands are on deck to answer these questions and have this be our main focus.
Do, do we have some way to communicate to the landlords to kind of say, to let them know what we're thinking about? Because what I would hate is, I think the moratorium is about to come up here in a little bit. I'd like to have some communication, just let them know we, we're working on this, we're trying to get it there, and they can give us some grace to work through it, is that possible, through what you already have existing?
Well, we work with landlords that work with General Assistance. So our pot is small, but obviously we have the media here. I think that'd be a good way to go, or the different landlord associations to let them know that this is coming down. I think the best way to do it is to have, if your tenant has X, Y, and Z, that we most likely will be able to help assist with them. So I think getting the word out via the news is probably the best bet, because if we do letters and stuff like that, again, we could notify our contacts, and we can also work with MATCH, Together, all of them, if we can have a letter and they can send them out to people as well, especially for people that maybe have already come and applied or have inquired for assistance, where we can hand them this template that says, you know, your tenant will be eligible, this is what it's going to look like, and this is when you should expect payment, maybe something like that.
Ben, I just want to add, Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, I'm definitely for the cause of this. We talked about it earlier, and I'd just like for it to be held off today to give Melissa some time to lay this out to us and give us the package off so we can approve and get it out the door rolling. Because if, if we approve it, it's just going to sit there because we don't have anything behind it. So I'd like to just ask for it to be delayed, the committee to get a shot at it Thursday and, and work through it and, and go from there so we can hopefully get it out as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Great, thank you. Melissa? Melissa, first of all, I just want to tell you what a great job you do, I'm really very impressed with your work, you're doing a great job, so. But I, I did want to, something I ran into, when the evictions were taking place downstairs, I called legal aid and went down there and all that sort of thing, and I talked to someone who's got, is a very wealthy person in the community, and who contributed ten million dollars to, for rental assistance, and I tried to get United Way to take it and do all this stuff, and it, for some reason, fell apart. But what I'd like to ask it, during the course of all that investigation, one of the groups that I found that Mary Ann's on their board is MATCH, is that how you, okay? And they have, and I know you're familiar with, they have, I think, fourteen agencies that they give money to, they're all accredited and all the rest of it, and this is what they do for a living. I, I guess what I'd like to say, Jim, first of all, I support, I support this resolution, but I think the quickest way to get this money distributed is to use some organizations already existing in the community who do this day in and day out. And, because I've talked to you, and you've been a terrific help on people that needed, needed help, I know you helped a woman with three kids that was really desperate, and I really appreciate it. But it seems like we ought to go to MATCH and say, okay, you've got fourteen agencies, and here's a million dollars, which one is most effective, give it to them, and let's roll with it. That seems to me to be the quickest, no employees are added and all the rest of it. But it, I'll go with the flow, but I think that's the best way to do it, I really do.
Our preference would be to work with some of the local nonprofits that are already doing the work as well.
Who's that again?
The local nonprofits that are already doing the work, that's would be our preference as well.
Okay, good deal.
She was essentially saying ditto, and so would I.
Okay.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just two more things, and I was going to point out that Rand, that Randy McCoy, the Executive Director from the Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless is here today. And, and he can come speak to this, but, I mean, there have already been approximately four hundred and thirty-four households representing about a thousand sixty-seven individuals with a total of about three hundred, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus that's been provided to Douglas County towards some kind of rental assistance, or rental assistance was three hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred. So there's a process, obviously, somewhere out there that we can look at.
Yeah.
That I think would help in this distribution of these funds. But then also, on just the landlords, I want to be careful that putting out that message that, you know, we're going to have dollars available, it has to be COVID-related, remember? And again, that is, how are we going to determine that? Are we going to determine that by them having to show that they were furloughed, that they were laid off, that they had their hours reduced, they had COVID? I mean, again, those are things that we have to make sure, because a landlord's just not going to get the money, because we have money for rental assistance. It has to be someone who's living in that structure, who has a COVID-related issue. So again, I, I think if we want to say, and I would be fine today saying that we could put ten million dollars in a pot towards rental assistance, come up with the process and come back after approved by Deloitte Touche, and again, it's probably going to be more as we move through, through this, but let's get our process down, let's see what, who we've got out there that needs assistance, and then have them come back. And so, you know, I'd be, I'd be fine with making that motion. Yeah, yes. I'll make a motion that we put ten million dollars aside for rental assistance as we develop, as we develop our process and eligibility requirements and application process, and who we're going to work with in the community to distribute this, and it's approved by Deloitte Touche.
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
Not, not the ten million.
The most, to amend the.
We don't have a motion.
Well, you, no, you have one.
I made the motion, okay.
Yeah, can you, we just change, or amend the resolution that's there to say that?
Yeah.
To, to strike out and insert that language. That, that gets you there process-wise.
We need to approve Mr. Kavanaugh's motion and amend it.
No, you just have to, yeah, say a motion to approve.
Did his motion get a second?
Yes.
Yeah, PJ.
All right, so are you offering an alternative motion or an amendment?
Well, if I can offer an alternative, that's fine, but I think somebody just said that's not.
I'll accept either one, but I need to know which it is.
An alternative motion.
All right.
So, can I be heard on this?
You will, you will. Is the secondary? Okay with that, okay. Commissioner Morgan, you were next, I'll make you. All right, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. The reason that this is on the agenda is because the last time we brought it up, it was, well, it's not on the agenda, and so we can't approve money that hasn't had public publication and notice to the people. And now, all of a sudden, we can do that. It's interesting that the process seems to be more important than the people. What we just approved in thirteen point four million dollars to the Douglas County Health Department was done in about twenty minutes. No process talked about there, and millions of dollars going to people, for instance, the homeless portion of this, with no criteria whatsoever. But now, when we want to put money in people's pockets to pay their rent, we've got all kinds of stumbling blocks. I hope people are paying attention to what's going on here. For the better part of two months, we have done nothing to assist renters in Douglas County using CARES money. And now, when we have a proposal just started with a million dollars, a fraction of what we just approved with pretty much sight unseen on a bunch of things for Douglas County Health Department, we can't even do a million dollars. We have a process, we have a process, we have a process. Well, we have people who have to pay rent, they had to pay rent last month, they had to pay rent the month before that, and apparently we're going to kick this can down, so they can't pay rent this month. You know, we're sitting on a bunch of six-figure public employees who don't feel the urgency of people who don't have any income, because they lost their jobs due to COVID-19. None of that discussion went into any of the prior multimillion-dollar projects that we just approved, but when it comes to individual people receiving individual assistance, we all, all of a sudden, have a process that we have to go through that will preclude us from helping them in any immediate way. Eight weeks have gone by, and no process has been developed. We're trying, with the general assistance people, to do some very simple things. We've held hearings, we've had this discussion with them, they're well aware of where we want to go, and it is as simple as this. Other counties have done it. Did you lose your job because of COVID-19, and are you on unemployment insurance? Okay, you passed the test. Then, what is your rent? And we can pick a reasonable rent cap, currently it's six hundred dollars for general assistance, which is abysmal, way too low. And we make it a reasonable rent, I think the average rent in Douglas County is about nine hundred dollars a month. These things have all been researched by people who really know what they're doing in terms of renters' assistance and the need in our community. They've actually been before this board. We've actually heard from them in previous hearings. They've actually come before the general, or the Health and Human Services Committee and have presented their ideas and their willingness to help. None of this has come in any of the multimillion-dollar projects we've just approved, but all of a sudden, that's a problem here with the process. So I am hopeful that we will have a million dollars that can at least start the process to make people here happy, because it's not going to make anybody in the renters' community happy in getting their rent paid this month. And I would point out that this is a renters' assistance program. It will help landlords, but it's primarily renters' assistance that we're going for. I know there are landlords here that are very concerned about landlords being taken care of, but the landlords are only secondarily impacted by the COVID layoffs that the renters are experiencing. It's about those people. And I hope that we can do something for those people today, more than just talk about the process. We certainly did stuff for the Health Department, we certainly did stuff for Corrections, and we certainly did stuff for other entities in the tens of millions of dollars, no process talked there. But we can't do anything for the individual renters of Douglas County without the process being taken into consideration. I think it's a little disingenuous, a little bit of a double standard, and I would hope that we could get past this and just do something, just act, rather than wait eight weeks, hire Deloitte, pay them, and then wait for Deloitte to tell us whether or not we can do something that is happening coast to coast in more heads-up counties who have got their process in place and put rent assistance in people's pockets. We're all on the same timeline, why are they so much in front of us? In any event, we'll hold a hearing on Thursday to go through criteria so that we can get this in place, and maybe that process will speed things up. But for now, I would hope that we'd at least put a million dollars into it and get going on paying people's rent assistance.
The alternative motion before us is for ten million dollars.
Clark, can I speak?
To a rental assistance fund. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, after hearing Jim repeat himself about eighteen times, I wanted to ask general assistance, I had to leave the room for a moment. General assistance, if you were to be given the million dollars today, how soon would you be able to use it?
Commissioner Kraft, it's really hard to say, because I do not have the parameters. I think with the other departments, it's simply, it's more of a black and white issue, whereas with our department, or just these funds in general, all of the questions that Commissioner Borges asked, those are questions that I have as well. So the sooner we get those answered, then the sooner we can disperse. But right now, I don't have those answers, so it's very difficult to say. If we get all of those answered this afternoon, and then I work with the Clerk's Office to figure out how that money is going to be dispersed, you know, but it's getting those questions answered.
Okay, because I do support the motion. I just don't support having to hear the same argument sixteen times in a five-minute period. So I do intend to vote for it.
I.
Because then, perhaps by the end of the week, you can get some checks out. And that's all I wanted to say.
I, I would remind the board that what's before us at the moment is an alternative motion to put ten million dollars.
And I think that's out of order, Mr. Chairman, I think we have a motion on the floor that cannot be amended.
It's not an amendment, it's an alternative motion.
There's no notice on this, as there was required on the motion for the million dollars. You made it very clear last meeting that you couldn't do this based on not having a week's notice and put it on the agenda. And all of a sudden, that's gone away, I guess.
Commissioner Rogers. Chair, you know, I think it's, I think it's fair, it was listed on the agenda, we're actually, you know, I, I think you, you got trouble accepting yes, because we pretty much are going to do what you're going to do and add money to it, to get it rolling as soon as possible. But I, I just want to say three things, you know, when you say there's not a process, you're factually wrong on that, everything that came through had a process, the Health Department has had a process since the start of this, and has been in this realm for years in dealing with infectious disease and working with them, so that's not true from the Health Department, and the bidding process and everything that we use now is already there process-wise. Second, you know, I'm not going to take a second seat to you to make me feel like I don't care for those people that are in need, so for you to, to come there and say that is a, you know, is a cheap shot. And so, third, you know, I just want everybody to know, I think everybody on, on the board is here. If you gave her a million dollars, or if we give you the, the authority for the ten right now, she's still going to be in the same place of having to go, and I think that's what the realm of my question was, to trying to see how fast you can get this up. So, you know, we're going to make sure we can get it out as soon as possible, I'm hoping, Melissa, that you can turn this around ASAP. And, you know, we know as a basis right now, there's ten million ready to roll to get to some people and, and get out, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I received a, all of us. I, here at the board, received a three-page letter from Omaha Community, or, excuse me, Omaha Together One Community, OTAC. And on the third page is an excellent presentation by Mr. Charles Gould, Gould of the First United Methodist Church, who spells out the criteria for distributing the money, the kind of proof that it has to come due to COVID and so forth. Without going into that, I, I would like to ask the Director of MATCH, if you would come up to the podium and just tell us, if, if you were given ten million dollars, what, what would you do to distribute it, and how quickly could you do it? We've visited a couple of times on the phone, but I've never met you, so it's a pleasure to meet you.
Hi, good morning. Randy McCoy, Executive Director, MATCH, the Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless.
And would you please tell what, what your organization does, and how many nonprofits you have involved that you?
Yeah, so MATCH is the, the lead entity for the Omaha Council Bluffs Continuum of Care. It is a HUD-designated body that covers Douglas and Sarpy Counties in Nebraska and Potawatomi County in Iowa. Essentially, our focus is to work to prevent and end homelessness and strengthen a system that not only helps individuals who do become homeless retain, access shelter and get back into housing, but also homeless prevention, affordable housing, and a lot of other things. You're, you're right, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Borges spoke to it, we launched a project that we were, we were working on launching anyway, we launched it at the end of March, primarily because of COVID, and we knew that this would be an, an issue. And so since then, we've distributed not quite six hundred and twenty thousand dollars across the three communities, about a half million of that is in Douglas County, and what we have seen is about eighty percent or a little over of the households coming in have been directly impacted by COVID, primarily around loss of income or loss of employment. And when we start to look at other factors, and one of the things that we look at daily, like some of you were mentioning, is the Douglas County Health Department website. As we look at ZIP codes within the city, within the county that have been most impacted by COVID, and then we look at the eviction docket for the month of June, the, the county, the ZIP codes that are most impacted by COVID are also predominantly the highest in the number of potential evictions in June, the top five being about a hundred and twenty for the month. So, so, so it's kind of that, you guys already know this, right? There, there is an impact, and this would happen. About the, the ten million dollars and how quickly it can be rolled out, that, that's a good question, and I think the conversation about who you would target and what the, the federal criterias are for, for CARES Act dollars is, is a very good one. I mean, ultimately, the county is the responsible entity for these funds, you wouldn't want whoever is doing it, OMB or HUD, in, in the case of most of the funds that we work with, come back six months, a year, five years from now and say, hey, guess what, now you owe us eight of that ten million back. The, the program that we crafted and are currently operating is funded primarily through private philanthropy, to the tune of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, so the, the guidelines are relaxed as compared to some of the federal funds that we are preparing to receive in the next few weeks from the City of Omaha with Community Development Block grants. And, and again, CARES Act does just offer another layer of complexity to that. HUD and, and the government overall, I think, has been a little slower in issuing some directives and guidance around the use of those funds. But, you know, as, as was mentioned, I think you could work out a, a broad brushstrokes of what that kind of program would look like in, in a few days. But I, I think you would want to definitely get, get the idea that it is, it's all good with what the CARES Act regulations are. You were also right, Commissioner Boyle, we're currently working with fifteen nonprofits across the three-county area, the majority of them being in Douglas County, but, you know, we, we work with them in all three counties to disperse the funds. And I, I think it was Commissioner Borges was mentioning earlier, for the most part, we preposition funds with those agencies so that they can write the checks on the spot, that we reimburse them as they spend down funds. We do have staff that are also assisting individuals. The two things that I can tell you are that in the last few weeks, and I mean, over like the last four weeks or so, we have seen two things. The, the first is the number of people coming in for assistance on a daily, weekly basis is increasing, and the amount of funds that they are looking for or needing to remain housed is also increasing. In the early days, so like in, in the first part of April, it was mostly people who couldn't pay their rent in April, but now what we're seeing is people who, as you were mentioning, I haven't paid my rent in April or May and June, and I don't know how I'm going to do it in July. And so it's, it's an ever-increasing and escalating problem, and now that the eviction moratorium is lifted, it certainly becomes more, more complex.
See, well, I get, and I, and I really appreciate your telling us.
Well, I get, and I really appreciate your telling us those experiences. And my impression of your umbrella group, if that's appropriate, is that you work with these agencies that specialize in this sort of thing. And I think, I appreciate Mr. Kavanaugh putting this on the agenda. And I know it's a little bit acrobatic perhaps to get through all this and come up with $10 million, but I'm in favor of it. And, but, and I think we have a lot of talented people, and you're certainly one of them, who could help us distribute this money in a way and check out, making sure that it is COVID-related and all the rest of it. I feel very comfortable. And frankly, Melissa could do that as well, but she'd have to start up some other things. And I think you're ready to roll. You know, that's the difference. So I really appreciate what you do, and I think we're, I'd like to see this money, frankly, go to MATCH and have them distribute it and keep track of it, because I think they're capable of doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
That's my thought.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for that. You were one of the organizations that were mentioned that the discussion that we had here on May 19th. And I think you might have been at the HHS Committee hearing, maybe by Zoom, on the 28th. But the idea is to do this as quickly as possible. You know, we're 90 days or more into the situation where people have been laid off, furloughed, call it what you will, and their rent hasn't stopped. So you're up and running with your privately-funded rent assistance program. Would it be possible that you could, partnering with our General Assistance people, help us stand up as quickly as possible, a CARES-funded renters' assistance program? Is that possible?
Yes, Commissioner, we would, we're very happy to do whatever we can to help General Assistance or however you want to disperse the funds.
That's great. So on Thursday, Health and Human Services Committee has got a follow-up committee meeting on this specific topic, following up on the one that we had on the 28th, following up on the one that we had at this board meeting on the 19th of May, to see if we can get, using your criteria, the criteria that counties across the country have used, the expertise that General Assistance has had, to formulate a program that would bring renters' assistance to people, you know, not in 30 days, but by July. And that's possible?
By July, so nine days? I would not guarantee that, Commissioner.
All right, but as soon as possible. I mean, certainly, you know, we're 60 days into having CARES, and we haven't gotten anybody a penny of renters' assistance. Certainly, we can do better. And so certainly not 30 more days.
It may be. And I'm not saying that like the processes or the mechanisms to disperse funds may not be able to be in place within 30 days. But I would just say that, in not understanding all the technicalities of the way the commission functions, like the legal department may have something.
We have, as you are aware, an up-and-running renters' assistance program through General Assistance.
Yes.
And you're probably familiar with those criteria. Those criteria need to be slightly amended. To allow people to have unemployment insurance and get renters' assistance, to allow people to have over $600 worth of rent and get renters' assistance. Those are minor tweaks of an existing regulatory framework. So we're not recreating anything here. We're just expanding what we've already got. And using your criteria, maybe melding in some of the lessons that you've learned doing your privately-funded renters' assistance program in the last, how long has it been running?
Since the end of March, so really.
I'm sorry?
April 1st.
Very good.
I mean, it was a good start date.
And we'd appreciate your support on that. And if you could come on Thursday, we could certainly get to work on this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I guess the other thing, in answering your question, and you're right, those things do need to probably be amended in terms of the General Assistance criterias and regulations. But I do not, I do not, and I would defer as to how those kinds of amendments have to go through, if they just have the authority.
Oh, well, you know, it's interesting because we pass an emergency resolution at the beginning of the pandemic that we use system-wide for all kinds of things. For instance, we're not doing competitive bidding for COVID stuff because of the emergency resolution. And again, and again, and again, we've used this. So those powers have been in place since, I think, before we even got the CARES money. It's just a matter of using them. It's just a matter of doing something, and that's what we're interested in doing. The need is urgent, as I'm sure you're aware. And people are hurting, and we don't need to wait another 30 days to get them help. So thank you. And we look forward to your participation in this. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Patrick?
I was just going to say really quickly, if we work with the nonprofits to have them provide rental assistance, then we won't need to amend our General Assistance guidelines because we won't be doing it in-house. We will be having the nonprofits do it. That would probably be the quickest way to factuate it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Then the alternate motion before us. This is the opportunity, the motion before us that, and you can speak before we vote, Larry.
Can I just remind you that there may be some folks on Zoom that want to speak as well?
Larry. All right. The motion that we are debating or will be voting on is the alternate motion to put $10 million into the rental assistance fund of our.
How does that take precedent over the motion, Mr. Chairman? You're just making this up as you go along.
Would you wish to speak?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette. Now, if I heard right, we're on item number four. It was separated from the others. So I take an opportunity to comment once again. In trying to listen and hear everything, I hear a lot of words that kind of concern me. Words do matter. Words such as Council Bluffs, nonprofits, Council Bluffs, nonprofits work into this somehow? How does Iowa people and Council Bluffs businesses or whatever work into this funding? I don't think I want to help bail them out. This is, I think we citizens delegated to you to represent us, not Council Bluffs. So that needs to be, that needs to be clarified. It's not spelled out. Maybe the world herald could do that for us. But I also want to comment like I did last week before I got escorted out. Did I also observe last week as well as this week, our representatives on the other side grimacing, and maybe their heads are down for most of the meeting. And then when Mr. Kavanaugh says something, or Mr. Boyle says something, you get after them. And I would, for once, I'm trying to be an instigator, not an activist. But I for once would like to see a deputy walk one of you out for your behavior. Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Well, can I just clarify real fast?
If I may, I forgot Commissioner Borgerson.
I just want to clarify for Larry real quick that the Metro Area Continuum Care for the Homeless serve Douglas, Sarpy, and Potawatomi. This money that we're talking about for rental assistance, again, one of the criteria would have to be that they would be a resident of Douglas County.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Will Timmons, 2464 Harney Street. I'm a bit confused as to why this is such a contentious allocation. And granted, I'm not on the same intellectual echelon as the members of this board. But, you know, I do know what it's like to have to choose between, you know, buying food and paying rent, or, you know, fixing my car, which I used to go to work, and paying rent. And I don't really know, you know, how long a time it's been since the members of this board have had to feel that. And I think that might somewhat contribute to why this is so contentious and why we're having so many problems. I'm confused about why we're treating these as mutually exclusive endeavors, why we can't allocate a million now and then allocate $10 million next week? Do both of them, you know, help people as soon as we can. We talk about these processes and stuff, and we talk about it in a context where, you know, we assume they're going to take this massive amount of time to achieve. And they may, but it could also be, you know, we come across a structure that we've had in place that we can just expand upwards, and we can use that in two days from now. So why not do that? The goal is to help people as soon as possible, and I don't see how waiting a week is helping as soon as possible. Let's not leave the door open for that. I think, um, it's just, I don't know, it's just somewhat apparent to me that we seem to get tripped up and get concerned in the minutia of helping individuals at the individual level. You have mentioned about, you know, how we have people that already, you know, are needy, need this help, need assistance, that are getting it. But, you know, last time I checked, the Section 8 housing vouchers, we have a two-year waitlist, you know, people that need rental assistance. I mean, the rental assistance we give already isn't enough. We have a two-year waitlist of people that need assistance, qualify under the already sparse program, and aren't getting it. Any matter of public policy, any public program is going to have gaps. Things are going to fall through the cracks. But we seem to be uniquely concerned with helping the right pores and not the wrong pores when it comes to these matters of funding. If we allocate, you know, $600,000 worth of rental assistance, you know, to people that aren't the right pores, they're not the COVID-affected pores, they're just the regular pores, and we get audited and we have to pay that back, I'm fine with paying a little bit, you know, a two-cent tax levy on that because there's people that need to stay in their houses, that are getting help, that aren't facing the humiliation of being put out onto the streets, whose kids aren't being traumatized for life. It's just an incredibly important matter. And I just, it's just absurd that for some reason, you know, we enter these halls and we can't decide on, you know, helping people as soon as possible because of these absurd bureaucratic processes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address this board?
I would echo. I'm Gloria Osterberry, member of Omaha Together One Community, Augustine Lutheran Church. OTAC supports the effort to quickly get funding to be ready to provide for renters to enable them to avoid eviction. This work needs to be done quickly. Nonprofits that have proven records in this area are the go-to groups at this time. And we should think about creating a maximum benefit per household, qualifying household, under the COVID CARE Act guidelines. Put that maximum up to $1,000. And also consider the loss, not only the loss of income to families because of COVID, but also the loss of daycare or elder care providers. So I appreciate all the hard work and thought that's going into this and the efforts of Commissioner Kavanaugh to make this aid happen as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gloria. Would anybody else like to address this issue?
Yes, I'm Karen McElroy, with Omaha Together One Community and a member of Holy Name Catholic Church. I'm glad that we have support and have been able to have the commissioners share our research on what we have looked at as far as rental assistance for rent burdened families. The average cost of, or the fair market value of a rent of a two-bedroom unit in Douglas County is $946 a month. Okay, and so that is very close to what Gloria has mentioned as the $1,000 part per month. But we need to be aware that we have these families that have been suffering now, as has been talked about, and approaching their fourth month of rent instability. So with the eviction courts opened, these people need the money in their hands now. You have been presented with an unprecedented opportunity to get the rest of these funds out to people who need them. And in our op-ed, we did mention the amount of $35 million, which sounds much higher than what anybody has spoken to today. But what the $35 million is, is if we gave all of the 36,000 rent burdened families in Omaha, if we supported them with one month's rent. That amount is $35 million. So please keep in mind that some of these people are into their third and fourth month, and that now is probably a few days too late for many of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address this issue?
Yes, my, good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rosalyn Volkmer, and I am a member of St. Pius, the Catholic Church, and also a leader in Omaha Together One Community. And, you know, I came here early this morning ready to support Commissioner Kavanaugh's emergency resolution to put $1,000, or pardon me, $1 million into a place where people could start to get rent assistance very quickly. And I certainly am happy to see that that number is being increased to $10 million as we're speaking about it at this point. I think all of us know that there are so many people out there who are suffering now. And I'd just like to give you an example. I've actually been searching for rental assistance for a female head of household. She is self-employed. She and all of her four children have been diagnosed with COVID-19. She has spent a few days in the hospital. She's not applied for unemployment. She was not expecting to be unable to work. And she hopes to get back to work as soon as she can once she and her family are feeling better and they get through this quarantine process. However, she is a person who lives from, her income from month to month. She does not have the amount needed to pay her rent this coming month. She actually says that she has $200 right now, that she can apply to her rent. And her rent is $1,000 a month. Now, we've reached out to some of the agencies that normally help with rent, and we have found one agency that said we'd like to help it. We have no resources right now. We have another agency that has not even returned a call. We have another agency that said we may be able to help several days ago, but, you know, in checking back, we've heard nothing. So I went to my women's prayer group, and I told them the story of this family. And they dug down into their pockets, and we came up with enough money to assure that she can pay her rent this coming month. So, you know, that's just an example of one family that we know of that is suffering in that way and really, really need the kind of help that can be provided if we can figure out a way to do it. And I appreciate Commissioner Borgerson's questions and really wanting to make sure that we have a good process. There are examples of counties out there that have done it. So we certainly can get those good processes, I think, and get them put into place. I do also want to say that, yes, let's work through these agencies that know how to do this kind of distribution of money in the community that are already involved and proficient and at distributing this kind of assistance, who have the expertise to do it, and who not only know how to interview applicants for this particular need, but they also can offer further assistance and referrals as other needs arise for people. So working through these really great nonprofits that we have in our community seems to me to be one of the best things that we can do. So just in closing, my prayer group is not in the position to subsidize the rental needs of the many people who could come knocking at our door, but you are. So please find a way to help keep all of our families healthy by allocating at least $35 million to keep people in their homes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Clark, if I may speak?
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, I support the $10 million as an initial response. And as soon as we find out how big the need is, we can appropriate more money. I would support the $35 million, but I want to make sure we have the proper process in place. Now, OTAC sent us a letter yesterday that has a process. I didn't see it. I didn't read it yet. I was, I don't know when we received it, but I understand it was last night. And I'm very glad they sent that to us because I had asked for it. But, you know, losing your home is devastating. Losing your business is devastating. Any one of these things could come cascading down around you. Not only does it affect you and your neighbors and your children and your relatives, there are just so many things that lose. there are just so many things that losing your home amounts to. And that is one of the most important things we can do right now is to fund rental and mortgage assistance. I have to tell you, I have a confession. When I was on the city council, I had a friend who had hired an irresponsible contractor who roofed the house and it leaked immediately. And they were, they had this mortgage taken out, not only on the house, but on the repairs. And I could not find a means to save their house for them. And I have to tell you, I, they both passed away, but I feel terrible about it. And I understand because we would talk weekly and I would reach out to different groups to see where I could get help. Now, this is 1998, I think. And it's a different world today, but we need to help these people. I don't want to see anybody have to go through what my friends went through. So yes, I support the $10 million this week. And I'll support an additional $10 million next week and probably an additional $10 million a week after that. So Mary Ann, thank you for amending our alternate, an alternative amendment because I'd much rather have 10 million in the pot than 1 million immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think a significant difference, too, though, about the substitute motion under consideration is that the entire 10 million would be allocated through the nonprofits, that we would not be trying to do this in-house, that we wouldn't be gearing up our staffing for it. Further questions?
Yes, and I agree.
Further questions or comments to the?
Yes, I'd like to comment. My name is Charles Gould and I'm a member of the First United Methodist Church and a leader in Omaha Together One Community. OTAC is part of a national network of institutions called the Industrial Areas Foundation. Several of our sister organizations across the country have been successful in working with their county governments and independent auditors to identify how CARES Act funds can be used to support rental and housing needs and how to efficiently distribute those funds. For example, Fort Bend County in Texas received $134 million in CARE Act funds and they allocated $21.5 million to their rental and utilities assistance program. The program would give up to $1,500 per month for up to two months for rental assistance and up to an additional $500 a month for utilities for two months for households that met the eligibility criteria. And we're talking about looking for examples. This is an example. Their criteria, criteria would include their, an income of 80% of the county's average median income or eligibility for programs such as Medicaid or public housing assistance. Fort Bend County households would also demonstrate their eligibility by providing proof of inability to pay rent with a late notification or eviction notice and proof of lost income with a certification of income loss statement due to COVID from their employer. And by working with local nonprofits who have proven track record of administering this kind of support, residents would be able to access CARES Act funding with a trusted institution that can also connect them to other supports they may need. It, it is, we certainly support the allocation of, of $10 million as an initial response because housing is a public health issue. And OTAC is ready to support the board in ensuring that people remain healthy and safe in their homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers.
Sure, I have a question.
Okay. Mr. Ash, did you have a point?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure I do this resolution correctly. So I know we've been talking a lot. People probably want to get moving on, but I'm just going to read a couple of these wherethes where I, changes need to be made. So the first one's fine as it is. The second one, whereas the county wishes to allocate $1 million for the provisions of rental assistance to Douglas County residents who have suffered financial hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic, an additional dollars may be allocated in the future if more is needed. So on that one, we're just changing the one to 10 million, right? Okay. Now, the third one's where it gets a little trickier for me. Douglas County will minister this program through its Department of General Assistance and will develop program eligibility criteria and coordinate dispersment of said funds for rental assistance in compliance with the CARES Act provisions and guidelines. So we don't want general assistance involved at all in this money.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Ash, I think probably what you want to say is whereas Douglas County will, let's see, will distribute these funds in compliance with the CARES Act provisions and guidelines.
In a minute. Are you done? Okay.
With both general assistance and, and local nonprofits, I think that's a great idea. And we've already heard from a bunch of them that they want to participate. We'll just add that, not-for-profits and, and make it, you know, both of them. Then we can go back and forth and however it goes.
Commissioner Boyle?
That is that I spoke to legal counsel and she's, and she, it's a little bit iffy, of course, but whether or not we have to have a hearing to change those limits at the county board and that would be another week's delay. I just, we've got the nonprofits that are ready to roll and have done this. And I just, Jim, respectfully, I appreciate your bringing it up in the first place. We wouldn't be here if it hadn't been for your suggestion. But I think the way it's evolved is that it's a better ending with using.
I hear you, Mike. And, and I'm certainly for speed. I just was operating under the understanding that our emergency resolution, which we passed at the beginning of the pandemic, would take care of those like it has the open competitive bidding and other statutory requirements. I mean, we're operating under an emergency resolution on a lot of these things. I don't, you know, I'm not stuck on this. If that's quicker, yes, that's fine. But I, I, I would ask the county attorney, doesn't the emergency resolution allow us to dispense with some of these as we have on so many other matters?
If I could interject, maybe we could put the word "or." You know, I mean, the thing is, it's much better to have this organization that does this full-time. That's all I'm suggesting.
Tracy York County Attorney's Office. So the original question was raised quite a bit ago and it had to do in relation to last week's meeting and whether or not, and last week I had said that you could not go ahead and proceed forward due to an open meetings concern. Didn't have to do with budget, didn't have to do with having a public hearing. The open meetings concern last week had to do with the fact that this item was on for discussion only. This item now, today, is here for discussion and action. And so that resolves the open meeting question that we addressed last week. With regards to budget, I will defer to Joe Lorenz. There sometimes is a need for a public hearing should you alter a budget item. It's my understanding this would not alter a budget item, that this board already appropriated, and I don't have the exact figure from memory, but it was like 50 million plus. You already appropriated that and moved that into your budget. So this is accounted for in the budget as it currently exists and therefore does not necessarily trigger a, a need for a public hearing under the two public, under the two budget statutes that the board routinely complies with. So I think what you have today before you is, is presented discussion and action, resolves the open meeting question, and I don't think it implicates a budget question, but I would defer to Joe on that and he's shaking his head no. So I don't think you have a budget issue. And then in conferring with Dan Ash, the county clerk, I think this is the only motion on the floor. It's being called an alternative motion, but I believe it's the only motion with a first and a second. So it is the motion before the, before the board and I believe Commissioner Boyle has called that motion.
Oh, excuse me, just a couple of questions. First of all, the resolution was a motion and had a second. I made the motion.
I could be, I'll defer to Dan Ash, but I don't believe that it did.
I thought Commissioner Boyle had seconded the resolution. Am I mistaken?
I, I don't remember there being a motion or a second at all for.
Actually, I think I did, but.
Well, I make that motion and then he seconded it. I, I, I don't know why this wouldn't be the, but I'm not trying to derail the 10 million.
And I, and I don't recall that and perhaps I missed the motion and the second, but I think, I thought that this was the only, but I think that isn't the main focus.
Be that as it may.
Be that as it may.
I missed it too then, because I don't remember there being any other motion or second.
The question that I was asking you, counsel, was relative to coming back here to amend or supersede some general assistance regulations. I don't see that as, as necessary under our emergency powers where we're proceeding without coming back and saying, "This specific contract is not going to be bid" or "this specific statutory requirement is not going to be bid" because we passed the emergency resolution.
Commissioners, can I speak to that? The emergency resolution that was passed initially had to do with the bidding requirements for purchasing. The general assistance guidelines have to do with qualifications and how much to provide for general assistance for those who actually qualify for general assistance. I think the easiest thing to do is to simply, as Commissioner Boarderson had said, you're allocating $10 million towards rental assistance. The direction is to staff, is to record, to meet and recommend guidelines and criteria to this board as soon as possible for how to allocate that. It could be the recommendation could come back to say it will be sent to nonprofits but it will be coordinated with general assistance so general assistance will work closely with those nonprofits. That's probably how we would do it. It's not general assistance amending its guidelines or doing anything different. It's simply directing that we're going to allocate 10 million and come back to this board to say what our recommendation is on how to do that, what the process will be. That would be my recommendation.
I think that's a way forward. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, what I don't want to see is having the welfare department or the, whatever it's called now, that, to have to figure out all these COVID things and everything else. We've got a, an organization that does this and I just, I just think it's more sensible to have somebody like that who does this day in, day out and does this particular kind of, of granting. Makes a lot more sense than trying to reinvent the wheel. That's the difficulty.
And we will talk with them as well. I mean, we can certainly include them in the conversations on how.
I just assume many days so we can get this thing moving.
I, I think this offers us some flexibility and both organizations are familiar with and administer general assistance, administers rentals assistance and these private nonprofits administer rental assistance. They both have expertise in this area. I think Mr. Bloomingdale's idea and the amendment to 10 million is definitely a way forward and I would say, "Let's do it."
Okay, further discussion?
So this is okay? What the changes we made on this, changing the 1 million to 10 and then removing any reference to general assistance?
I would just, I would nix the resolution and just have a simple motion. Motion to allocate $10 million towards.
That's what this is.
Rental assist, I would just simply, two sentences. Motion to allocate $10 million towards rental assistance, period, second sentence.
COVID-related, yeah, yeah.
Direct, direct county staff to come back to this board as soon as possible with recommended criteria on how to allocate that $10 million for rental assistance, period.
I'd make that motion.
No, the, the motion is before us.
Call the question again?
Technically, that has to be voted on, so I, yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to wind down but want to give everybody a chance to speak. Okay, let's go ahead and vote on the motion, please.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. That was quick. Next, we have a presentation of ideas to improve racial equity in Douglas County government and the community. This is coming from Tyrone Harper, a pretrial coordinator of corrections, and Tanya Burnside, correctional officer two at corrections.
Sorry to keep you long, this is government at work, as you know.
Yes, I do apologize for how long we made you wait. That was not intentional. Good morning and welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Commissioners, I'm Tanya Burnside. I'm president of the African-American Correctional Officer Association. I serve the community as a Douglas County Corrections Officer and certified corrections auditor for the American Correctional Association. The last time I stood before you, some of you, I was the honored recipient of the 2018 Dr. Martin Luther King Living the Dream Award. I am just as honored to stand here today. My thanks to all of you and the attendees for taking time to listen so that we may start a dialogue that fosters a critical consciousness. The AACOA is mostly comprised of Douglas County Department of Correction Officers, support staff, and former employees. Our mission includes maintaining a credible link of communication between the Douglas County Department of Corrections, African-American correctional officers, and other staff members who support our mission. We strive to enhance the quality of work standards within DC, DC, building a more professional staff, creating the best possible work environment and work-life balance for everyone. This year actually marks our 20th year since the association was established to ensure all staff were treated equally and given the same advancement opportunities. Twenty lead, 20 years later, we continue to work towards the goal of equality and advancement. We work continuously disseminating information about becoming a part of Douglas County Corrections. We are invested in community engagement, including mentoring, educational and family resources, and helping fight hunger and homelessness. The National Equity Project defines systemic oppression as systematic and has historical precursors. It is the intentional disadvantage of groups of people based on their identity while advantaging members of a dominant group, gender, race, class, sexual orientation, language, et cetera. We are here today asking for your immediate action to eradicate the systemic oppression that has left the Douglas County Department of Corrections with the diversity deficit and inequalities that have perpetuated power imbalances which will surely affect Black staff and other staff of color for many years to come. We are also here today asking for your immediate action regarding societal race relations, which Tyrone Harper will discuss momentarily. According to the Huffington Post Global Research Study, diversity needs to be better integrated and the purpose of diversity needs to be underscored by strategic focus. Our diversity deficit is prominent in overall staffing, promotions, specialty assignments, and training opportunities that lead to advancement. Currently, a strategic focus to promote diversity and to eradicate systemic oppression in our department is not apparent. Today, more than ever, we are burdened with what Michelle Alexander, author of "The New Jim Crow: Mass Incarceration in the Age of Colorblindness", refers to as the racial caste system, which is a second-class system that locks Black people and other people of color in permanent marginalization. Our department's racial caste system has existed since the original building was constructed in 1979. And it works to have Black people and other people of color in a never-ending inferior level within its racial hierarchy. Too many times, there have been higher seniority qualified Black staff members passed over for promotion only to have less qualified, less seniority white staff members receive the promotion. Generally, the lack of diversity hiring and diversity promotion passovers happen due to racism, white privilege, inherent bias, lack of diversity and cultural insis, insis, a lack of, I'm sorry, a lack of diversity and cultural insensitivity training, nepotism, fraternizing, and favoritism. Most times when we discuss the plight of Black staff members and other staff members of color, evidence is requested. Black women over 40, including myself, have reported on numerous occasions being treated unfairly, including being placed in undesirable assignments more than their younger white counterparts, especially white women, who are placed in assignments that lead to higher advancement. In addition, Black staff members are passed over for specialty positions. In addition, black staff members are passed over for specialty positions and promotions at a higher rate. If we observe with a lens of systemic oppression, the need for evidence is lessened. The lens of systemic oppression assumes that all negative forms of prejudice and bias are learned and therefore can be unlearned. Oppression and injustice are human creations and phenomena, and therefore can be undone. Systemic oppression and its effects can be undone through recognition of inequitable patterns and intentional action to interrupt inequity and create more democratic processes and systems supported by multi-ethnic, multicultural, multilingual alliances and partnerships. Discussing and addressing oppression and bias will usually be accompanied by strong emotion like we present today. The paper trail of racist or oppressive situations in our department is a short one, because the retaliation in our department is real and more evident than ever before. The retaliation is the reason our leadership may not always receive reports of racism and discrimination. The retaliation is a reason that someone doesn't file an EEOC complaint because they were unjustly passed over for a position they were more qualified for than the white person who got the promotion. The retaliation is the reason many staff do not report when they hear racist comments and gestures, including black people being referred to as the N-word, monkeys, Zango slaves, and other terms that shouldn't be repeated in public. Some incentive- some incentiveary comments or racially motivated incidents are slightly less blatant. For example, when Kerry Roscoe was killed, it was hard on everyone who wore blue and the communities we serve. However, a white officer working in booking looked particularly upset. I had a good rapport with this person, so I asked him if he was okay. He replied, no, one of your people killed a cop. I'm still disturbed by that to this day, and I'm reminded of it every time I see him. I don't say that to upset him or to incite anything. I say it so we can start a conversation. I asked a former staff member and a Lodge Eight Union president, former Lodge Eight Union president, how the union is supporting diversity in the Lodge and in our department. He replied, we support diversity, and I won't say the staff member's name, but it was a black officer. He said, we have him cooking for us. Many people that served with the former union president continue to serve on the FOP Lodge Eight Union Board, some of which have shared or supported in silence the racially oppressive views and actions of our union's former president, including perpetuating white privilege to maintain control. Currently, FOP Lodge Eight has no people of color on the board, yet many of our black and Hispanic members, including myself, are also members of the union. In the 14 years I've been a member, there was little to no effort until now. Finally, there is hope in starting an honest dialogue about race relations within our department and its impact on people of color. We have met with the current FOP Lodge Eight president, and we plan to meet on a continuous basis. Moving forward, we expect FOP Lodge Eight to act, including helping to promote anti-oppression efforts and increasing diversity within the Lodge and the Douglas County Department of Corrections. For the sake of time, I'll get back to the quantifiable diversity deficit. Excuse me. In 2019, the percentage of black staff was 17% compared to 76% white staff. The percentage of Hispanic officers, 5%, Asian officers, 2%, others, 0%. The most despairing percentages for black people in our department is the rank of sergeant, now lower than 13% compared to more than 81% of white sergeants. Black lieutenants, 0% compared to 100% of white lieutenants. Executive staff, 0% compared to 100% white staff. And miscellaneous staff, 17%. Black staff compared to 83% white staff. Clearly, black staff and other staff of color are underrepresented, especially within the higher ranks and the executive staff. Although we have yet to receive the 2020 racial breakdown, the deficit is apparent. In 2017, there had not been a black officer promoted to the rank of sergeant in over 13 years. The AACO A held and continues to hold sergeant workshops, including mock tests and oral interview sessions. We worked with administration from 2012 until the retirement of Dr. Foxhall on diversity initiatives, including changes in hiring practices to include diverse new hire panels, recruiting and disseminating information on corrections in communities of color, marketing and recruiting campaigns, including billboards, print ads, banners, and video. Due to our diligent efforts, we increased black, Hispanic, and Asian qualified applicants. As of today, DC DC has no diversity recruitment that we are aware of or included in. According to Melanie Bosch, award-winning journalist and managing editor of Police Magazine, there is an expectation of diversified law enforcement, including recruiting people of color. First Lieutenant Robert R. Hendricks, commander of Michigan State Police Recruiting and Selection Section stated, "Having a diverse workforce, especially when working in a diverse area, gives validity to your agency and your reflective of that community." Well, and that you are reflective of that community. Much to... Well, first, let me start off by saying we'd like to thank Mr. Mike Myers. Since he became the director, we have seen increased diversity regarding promotions. We had two black officers promoted to the rank of sergeant, one Hispanic officer promoted to the rank of sergeant, one Hispanic lieutenant promoted to the rank of captain, and one black record supervisor promoted to records manager. However, despite those efforts that he's made and that we are extremely proud for and grateful for, white people still occupy an alarmingly higher percentage of supervisors, managers, and administration positions. For example, currently, and I stand to be corrected, out of 46 sergeants, we have only five black sergeants, two Hispanic sergeants, and one Asian sergeant. Currently, we have 12 white lieutenants, no black lieutenants, and other lieutenants of color. Currently, lieutenants who are, as I said... Currently, the lieutenants who are white are the only people conducting new hire and some internal interviews. We're hoping to work with Mr. Myers to change that in the very near future. This symbolizes a reverse of our efforts in assembling a diverse interview panel, hoping to extract the inherent and other bias element in hiring on both sides of the interview table. The over 81% of white sergeants are conducting internal interviews for specialty assignments. The disparity without dialogue and advanced diversity training is discouraging. We have black members, Hispanic members, Asian members, and white members. We pray for all of our members, but our hearts are heavy for our black members and other members of color because if we don't change this now, they will rarely report to someone that looks like them. New recruits will have less opportunities to be mentored by someone who understands the challenges they are sure to face. If we don't act now, the younger officers of color who are so eager to sign up for everything and so proud to be part of corrections have been or will eventually be exposed to most likely limited by the oppression we've experienced. If the struggle we experience doesn't move you, consider the state of race relations in our society today. There could soon come a day when the failure to provide adequate training on race relations and inclusion may amount to deliberate indifference to the rights of staff. Over the years, the AACO A has actively been part of the solution to eradicate systemic oppression in our department. However, as I've detailed here today, there is still so much more to be done. We need your help to include, but not limited to, countywide advanced training on diversity and inclusion with cultural sensitivity training for varied staff levels. Establish a diversity committee comprised of black and other Douglas County line and support staff as well as higher-ranking officers in administration. Review and ensure adherence to policies that will allow staff members to report racist acts, intolerance, and harassment anonymously in efforts to reduce retaliation and whistleblower violations. Mandate diverse hiring and promotional panels from various ranks and leadership positions. Ensure disclosure of applicant tracking to determine when we are losing applicants of color in the hiring process. Retrieve applicant data from OPD and other law enforcement agencies for potential hires to decrease diversity. Ensure an annual review of system profiles that promote diversity, including recruitment, selection attrition, adverse impact, turnover, and retention. Mandate knowledge, skills, and abilities documentation for all staff to be reviewed and updated at least yearly. Establish a committee focused solely on guiding the career path of staff members seeking advancement. Promote adherence to fraternizing policies and close observance of acts of nepotism and favoritism. As you stated, Commissioner Borgensen, we have to act. We can't just give lip service. Commissioners, we need you to act. We need you to rally around us like so many NASCAR drivers and garage area staff embraced Bubba Wallace after he found a noose hanging in the garage stall above his car. A garage with access to only competitors, officials, and track staff. He was threatened in the very place he worked so hard for, all because he took a stand and supported Black Lives Matter. We're taking a stand today, and we need you to rally behind us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Good afternoon, Tyrone.
Yes, my name is Tyrone Harper. I'm Douglas County Pretrial Coordinator, and I thank you for having me before you today. Psychological trauma is defined as damage to the mind that occurs as a result of distressing events. Trauma is often the result of an overwhelming amount of stress that exceeds one's ability to cope or integrate the emotions involved in that experience. August 20 of 1619, the first slaves arrived from Africa to Jamestown, Virginia. Trauma. November 11, 1831, Mr. Nat Turner hanged for leading a rebellion against the system of slavery. Trauma. September 28, 1919, Mr. Willie Brown of Omaha lynched by a large white mob. Pictures of his charged, still-burning body with onlookers and participants posing, laughing, and mingling in the background. Photos of lynchings and hangings of black humans used to be enjoyable family outings for many. These photos used to be placed on postcards. Trauma. August 28, 1955, Mr. Emmett Louis Till murdered in Mississippi for allegedly whistling at a white woman. His tortured body was found washed up on the banks of the Tallahatchie River, bound by barbed wire to a 70-pound cotton gin fan. The two white men known to have kidnapped him acquitted. Trauma. February 21, 1965, Omaha's own El Haze Malik El Shabazz, Mr. Malcolm X, lay bleeding on the stage of the Audubon Ballroom in Manhattan, New York, an influential black leader murdered. Trauma. April 4, 1968, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was shot and killed. A bullet from a high-powered rifle pierced his jaw-neck area, severing his spine on the balcony at the Lorraine Motel. His message was of nonviolence and peace, only to die violently from the trigger finger of American hate. Trauma. June 7, 1998, Mr. James Byrd lynched by three white men in Jasper, Texas. His body was dragged behind their truck for several miles. This left his arm, shoulder, neck, and head severed from the rest of his body. After disposing of his body in a cemetery, his killers attended a barbecue. Trauma. November 25, 2006, Mr. Sean Bell, New York Police Department officer, showered the vehicle of this unarmed black man with at least 50 rounds early in the morning the day he was to be married. Officers acquitted. Trauma. March 12, 2012, Miss Rukia Boyd bullied to the back of her head by an off-duty cop. Another acquittal. Trauma. July 13, 2015, Miss Sandra Bland found hanging in jail after her arrest on a minor traffic violation. Suspicion sealed surrounds her death as it was ruled a suicide. Trauma. May 25, 2020, Mr. George Floyd, a white police officer rests his knee on the neck of Mr. Floyd for eight minutes and 46 seconds, ignoring pleas from Mr. Floyd that "I can't breathe," and emotional cries for his mama. The whole world watched his life leave his body while the officer's knee remained on his neck even after he was visibly unresponsive. This after a complaint that he allegedly tried to pass a $20 bill. Trauma. Racism is man's gravest threat to man, the maximum of hatred for a minimum reason. Abraham Joshua Heschel. To the Douglas County Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak with you today. To the leadership of Douglas County Corrections, I want to thank you for being here today and allowing for open dialogue on these issues. To the Board of the African American Corrections Officer Association, AACO A, and valued membership, I want to thank you for your support and continued work. To all other attendees at today's meeting who find racial equity necessary and long overdue, I thank you for your stance against racism and your stance for justice and equality. My name is Tyrone Harper. As I've stated before, I'm an employee at Douglas County Corrections Pretrial Coordinator, of which I am very proud. I'm a father of four wonderful children, of which I am also proud. Before I was either of them, I was a black man, of which I am proudest. Over the course of the last several months, along with the COVID-19 virus that has descended upon our country and caused immeasurable trauma to many, especially our frontline medical workers and disproportionately affecting our black community, we have seen the centuries-old virus of racism continue to hover over this nation like the darkest of storm clouds. This has left many, myself included, to question if the cloud will ever lift and the sun will ever truly shine on this country. Recently, the race issue has been front and center with the modern-day lynching of Ahmaud Arbery and the murders of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. The country is at a crossroads. One road leads us down a path of continued hatred, racism, and inequality. The other path set before us is that of right, justice, legitimate freedom for all, and equality. My question to you, Commissioners, is what direction will you choose? The screams reverberating through the streets of American cities within the anger and frustration of protests and riots are screams of systemic racism and unfairness. I mention riots because Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. states riots are the language of the unheard. And what is it that America has failed to hear? It's clear that America has failed to hear the voices of black communities who have suffered through diabolical systems of oppression and racism, which have left many of our communities plagued by poverty, poor schools, crime, fatherlessness due to mass incarceration, and overall psychological trauma. It is important for Douglas County leadership to understand that you have employees, specifically correction staff, who are part of this community. They are not exempt from knowing this trauma simply because we are Douglas County employees and earn a decent living through our efforts within the walls of the jail and other Douglas County offices. We are asked to do our jobs effectively and efficiently and with great focus on detail, even when our jobs do not shield us from racism and the system created which allow for it to continue to exist. Even when some of those we work next to- for it to continue to exist, even when some of those we work next to and may have to rely upon for our safety represent racism, but try to mask it under the blue uniform of corrections. Recently, we've had instances of this type of attitude and beliefs expressed in text messages, Facebook posts, and on-the-job language. I must commend our Director, Mr. Mike Myers, for responding to these instances with a sense of urgency and resolve, but more has to be done. More has to be done to eradicate racist attitudes and behaviors within Douglas County. It is my feeling and the feelings of many others I have spoken with that the response by Douglas County and the Corrections Department to the recent trauma suffered in the Black community and the protest response that it has spurred was much too delayed. We have seen across the country and world that many organizations have had swift and radical responses to the cries of the Black community for racial equality. From Target to Twitter, from the NFL to the NBA, from Nike to Quaker Oats, many companies and businesses have taken bold stances against racism and have acknowledged the trauma inflicted upon the Black community. Because of it, one particular stance I must reference is a stance the city of Portland, Oregon, and Multnomah County have had in response to these issues. The Mayor of Portland, Mr. Ted Wheeler, has responded by offering all Black and Indigenous people of color 40 hours of oppression-related bereavement leave. In part, the email read, "We acknowledge that Black employees are experiencing a collective grief and trauma coming from a culmination of oppression that is over 400 years old. We hear and understand that many of our employees, especially our Black, Indigenous, and people of color employees, are deeply impacted by these recent events and are hurting. I want to give our employees space to grieve and reflect. This is a tremendous show of understanding, compassion, and support for the Black city employees of Portland." What's stopping Douglas County from that type of acknowledgement, compassion, and understanding by offering similar employees of Douglas County the same oppression-related bereavement leave? I suggest we suggest 24 to 40 hours. Due to the centuries-old trauma, I was so moved, I sent Mayor Ted Wheeler an email commending him on this tremendous gesture. In a recent conversation with an upper management staff member, I shared with them that even though I am not a blood relative of Mr. Arbery, Ms. Taylor, or Mr. Floyd, I felt heavy grief of a person who has lost his own brother or sister. Loss of appetite, depression, lack of focus have been consistent in my life for the last month and a half. The trauma is real. The grief is real. The response by Douglas County must be real and genuine and targeted to the feelings and mental health of its Black employees. On June 17th, 2020, this board wisely agreed with Douglas County Health Director Dr. Adipour in a unanimous vote that racism is a public health crisis, not issue, but crisis. She stated, "The problem has to have an effect on a large number of people." In reference to the statistics that prove to the fact, in reference to the statistics she provided, she states, "These are statistics that prove to the fact that being Black or being a person of color in America affects literally your livelihood and your health." This commission's vote acknowledges the trauma suffered by the Black community because of racism. This was a major step, but more progress must be made. We are suggesting gestures of understanding in response to this trauma. Secondly, I encourage Douglas County to make grief counselors available to all employees who would choose to use them free of charge. With the grief and trauma that has been experienced, it is understood that dealing with this grief appropriately for some may take counseling. You have a duty to make resources available to your employees who experience trauma so that they are most capable of doing their jobs effectively, efficiently, and with great attention to detail. Lastly, in regards to trauma, we request that a committee be formed within Corrections to address racial issues, some of the issues that President Burnside spoke about, and equality. This committee will be called upon when race issues arise within the country, local community, and within the department to help come up with solutions and to make Douglas County, and more specifically, the Corrections Department, a more racially harmonious place to work. This past Friday was Juneteenth, the recognized Independence Day amongst Blacks. On June 19th, 1865, Union Army Gordon Granger announced federal orders that all slaves in Texas were officially freed. This day is of significant importance to Black Americans and should have significant importance to all Americans, but that is not the case. A few weeks ago, Multnomah County in Oregon immediately made Juneteenth a paid holiday for its employees. We propose that you approve countywide observance and remembrance of the Juneteenth holiday as a paid county holiday, beginning June 19th, 2021, and going forward annually. We think this is a small but important gesture to show support and how much Douglas County truly values its employees of color. As I conclude, I want to reiterate your responsibility and obligation in being a leading voice for racial equality in Douglas County. You have a responsibility and an obligation to assure your employees' work in a safe environment where they are able to perform their jobs with the utmost detail and focus. Employees should feel protected, respected, and valued regardless of their color. Those who display racist attitudes and behaviors should not be allowed to call themselves Douglas County employees. We believe in the leadership and vision of the Department of Corrections, specifically Director Mike Myers and the County Commissioners voting into office to make Douglas County the work environment it should be. You hold us to a high standard, and we in turn hold you to a high standard. And the requests, proposals mentioned today are gestures we feel are a step in the right direction, lifting the clouds, allowing the sun to truly shine on Douglas County and our nation. I'll leave you with a quote by Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. "The time is always right to do what's right." Thank you very much for this time.
Well put. I'm going to, I did not want to limit you in time. That was very eloquent. Great. We are, however, going to get kicked out of our chamber in 12 minutes, and we do have a few more action items yet to take care of. And so with apologies, I'm going to limit response to being pretty short, just as a matter of time, but I truly thank both of you for sharing that with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And again, thank you. Very eloquent, very well put. Racism has no place in our ranks. Racism has no place in Douglas County. Racism has no place in America. We need to fight racism every way that we can. I agree with the measures that you're talking about, and we need to go forward and see how we can implement those. I hope that you were here last September when we held the two-day historical symposium noting the murder of Will Brown on this campus. Senator Chambers and other leaders of the African-American community joined us on that day and spoke out along the same lines that you're talking about. And yet, here we are. And yet, here we are. Racism runs like a red thread through the history of America, and we need to cut that thread and stop it. I have children, you have children. They don't learn racism at our house, and it's a taught behavior. We need to break that teaching cycle and teach compassion and unity and value for human life. So thank you for bringing this up. We have work to do, but you're stepping up here as a real inspiration to us. Thank you, and we need to work together to make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Okay, I got permission to talk for two seconds.
Yeah, to be quick.
I feel very strongly about what you said here. Both of you are just right on point with me, and, you know, it's probably hard to believe, but you know, I certainly don't share the grief you do, but it had an effect on me. I felt myself tearing up constantly when I would see that horrible, horrible action up in Minneapolis. I just am stunned. And then the other incidents that just continue to occur, and then people that aren't charged with anything, you know, Freddie Gray, and nothing ever came of that, and all these things that are unraveling. And what Mr. Kavanaugh said is something I say frequently, and that is that hate is taught at home. That's where kids learn to, what attitudes are toward other people who are different, who aren't the same. And that's what we need to really work on is to do that. And I also want to take a moment, and this will be the last comment, to congratulate and thank the Douglas County Board of Health for taking the courageous position they did to state what's true, that conditions that are surrounding oppression and other problems of minorities, Blacks and Indians and so forth, are really, it's a health issue. It does. And you look at the lifespan and all the rest of it, it affects everything. So there's a lot more to be said, but I'll leave those comments with you. I really appreciate your coming down and support you totally, and we're so fortunate to have Mike Myers where he is. I think it's a Godsend. So good luck, and you can expect cooperation, I think, from this county board.
Good words, but not very grief. And we really are running out of time. Commissioner Borgensen.
I just want to add my, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for being here today to talk to us. I hear you. I'm listening. My action will be to work with this board and staff to see which resolutions are appropriate to bring back within the next couple of weeks, and I will bring those back. That is my action promise to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Larry, I see you want to speak. We have eight minutes, and we still have to get through a lot of plans here.
I look eight, but short.
I'm going to give you 30 seconds. I, with, you can have 30 seconds, but we really are running out of time.
Request to write to return next week.
Thank you, Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette. Excuse me, but I didn't read the rules as I came in this morning, but our presentation is supposed to be limited to five or 10 minutes. Anyway, you know, I've had a lot of jobs, mostly around Omaha, and I do not understand why racism is still such a damn deep problem here. Why can't, why hasn't it been solved? And if there's racism going on in Douglas County Corrections, somebody should name names and kick butt and fire a few people. Don't be afraid to fire people if they're being racist, but don't you have to be accused? Now, I'd like to have a good conversation with everybody. I am not a racist. Maybe some of my words seem racist, but I can't have much good conversation because everything I hear from your side, folks, makes me guilty of everything in the past. That doesn't make it comfortable for us to have a discussion, but I will pay one quick thing that I want everybody to consider. I will not read every, all the evidence that I have, but it is a known fact, Black Lives Matters was founded by Marxist communists. And just one second. I want it clear that I don't want you people used by Marxist communists or anybody else.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to call time. I'm going to call time. I gave you 30 seconds, two minutes ago. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Mike, you hold your fingers up like short, and therefore I'll let you speak. Obviously, you're kind of an important player here.
Absolutely, Commissioners. Mike Myers, Director of Corrections, and I want to say I support everything that they said. It doesn't always make me comfortable, but I'm not supposed to be comfortable in my position. I'm supposed to be open-minded. I'm supposed to learn. I have learned from the African-American Correctional Officers Association. Approximately one year ago, I was making decisions about how I was going to interview for sergeants, and I had a meeting with them, and they convinced me that I should interview the entire list, even though that was going to take, we had an extraordinary amount of success with people passing the test last year. And I agreed, and it was one of the best decisions that I made because it opened my eyes to candidates who I may have overlooked.
Very good.
I, I, I just want to say I have a commitment that I've made to them, I made to everybody in our department, that we will continue to move forward. We will, their ideas about establishing more accountability are things that I fully support.
Very good.
And we'll move forward.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Yes. Yeah, if anybody, I mean, other than we have five minutes left to wrap our meeting up, I'm hoping that we can call that good for this subject for today. Thank you for sharing so much with us. I'm going to move on quickly to women's suffrage.
Well, I'll do it very fast. I sent you all.
The information. This is our 100-year celebration, and First Lady Melania Trump has put out an initiative saying, "Building the Movement: America's You," celebrating 100 years of women's suffrage. And what she's asking for is for our help to get the word out to our young people to submit artwork displaying what they feel this means. Now, the interesting thing about this women's suffrage and the conversation, whoop, they left. The conversation that we just had was that this was passed in 1920. We're celebrating the 100-year, but African-Americans were not given, women were not given the right to vote for 42, 45 years later until 1965. So I want the educational piece with our young people to understand that while we are proud that we have the right to vote, there were still some that were not given that right decade, until decades later. So I'll resend this to everybody so they can get it out to either their family, their friends, the schools that are having programs, so that we can get some artwork committed from Douglas County, Nebraska.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgensen. We lose the chamber in two minutes. Dan Kudlec has always thought that we don't give him enough respect. We've made him sit here for four and a half hours to present a one- and six-year plan, and now we'll give him about 30 seconds to present it.
So we're opening the public hearing?
Opening the public hearing on Douglas County's one- and six-year highway plan, and good afternoon, Dan.
I have a visual overhead if you could help me. Dan Kudlec, Douglas County Engineers Representative this morning. Thank you, Commissioners. As you all know, this is fine. As you know, we are required by state law to present a public hearing on our one- and six-year plan to the Board of Classifications and Standards. We have a very aggressive program this year. In the next five years, this particular fiscal year, 2021, is $66 million worth of work, which I think could be a new record for Douglas County. The majority of it is in one project, of course, on 180th Street. It's a federal aid project, $32 million project, plus some change. We are also very aggressively replacing bridges in western Douglas County. We have four in this current year. We are getting close to the point where we can claim, Mary Ann, for your information, we do not, we will not have any fracture, critical, or structurally deficient bridges in Douglas County in about a year or two. So that's something we can be very proud about. We are working with nine developers and SIDs this year on some large projects, one of which is on 192nd Street, south of Dodge. Avenue One and R&amp;R Development are paying entirely for the improvement of 192nd Street, about $8 million worth of work. We also have Mr. Chairman, Elk City Drainage Project's up for bat this construction season. We hope to start on that in the next month or two, so.
Dan has been a real hero out there. They have a serious drainage problem, and Dan is trying to help them out.
Quite a unique problem. So with that, I'll close. I know we're in time constraints. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
I apologize for not giving you more time. Sometimes these things happen. Thank you, Dan, for the good report and the good work.
My pleasure.
All we have left is legislative issues. I'm not aware of any.
If I may.
Oh, close to public hearing.
Thank, thank. Mr. Kudlec, do we, do we vote today or do we vote next week?
You've done it both ways.
Okay, I am closing the public hearing. We have a motion to a- We have a motion to approve, and lots of seconds.
Okay. Clerk Ash here, so the agenda says final action will be taken on Tuesday, June 30th.
Okay. All right, fine. Then, then that's what we'll do.
You can come back if you want.
All right, we'll vote on it next week. Not aware of legislative issues. I don't know what to do about, we do have need for exec session, but we ran too long, and we're losing the chamber, and I'm not sure what we're going to do about that.
You can go back there.
Well, perhaps we can do it back there.
We're fine to do it.
Teresa?
I believe we just have one item, and if you need me to move it, I can move it.
It's negotiations. We've got a couple items of negotiations.
No, no negotiations.
All right. All right. Motion to adjourn into executive session for negotiations? I thought there was litigation in there as well.
Chair, I am not aware that we have any need for negotiations, and Diane Carlson has confirmed that, so I don't know what.
Well, okay, I am, but that's fine.
I don't know what happened.
He went to take a phone call with the governor when it was supposed to be up. We're not voting on the six-year plan.
No, the executive. We do not need one. I can lay mine over till next week. It is not needed. So if you just want to vote to adjourn, you need to vote to adjourn.
Good.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mike.